April 14th, 2025 at 5:45 PM at the Lakeville Police Station. Is there anyone recording this meeting besides Lake Cam? Thank you. Now, start with call to order for the board and pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Five of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. How's everyone doing today?
Fantastic.
Enjoying the lack of rain for once.
What's that?
Enjoying the lack of rain for once.
You sound like Eeyore. You're like, "Well, it's not raining."
It's a work day, I must say.
Starting off with the Select Board announcements today. On April 19th, 2025, 10:00 AM, the Lakeville Lions will be holding their annual Easter egg hunt at their clubhouse at 170 Main Street. The public is invited to attend. The Senior Center has a fundraiser.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I had asked if we could slide that in there, but when I was at the Senior Center for my hour on last Friday, I noticed that they were sporting some really nice pullovers with the Senior Center emblem on them. So I had asked about it. So the Friends of the Lakeville COA, they're doing a fundraiser. So you can get the information right on the COA website. I just thought it would be nice because they do all kinds of wonderful things for our seniors through funds raised.
So, good idea. Thank you. Thanks for sharing. Current committee and commission vacancies. Two at large member for the Communications Committee, an associate member from the Zoning Board of Appeals, Board of Registars member, two vacancies for the Cable TV Advisory Committee, one vacancy for Conservation Commission, and one vacancy for the Agricultural Commission. Got a fun fact here. Tracy, who's today's fun fact from?
That would be Chief Perkins.
Chief Perkins provided us with this fun fact.
The first one.
On the morning of May 29, 1942, a US Army B-25 bomber loaded with depth charges was returning to the Westover Field from an anti-submarine patrol off the New England coast. As the plane was returning, it developed engine trouble and the pilot ordered the six-man crew to bail out. The aircraft crashed into a swamp, into swampland near Cranberry Bog, about a mile southeast of Elder's Pond in an area bordered by Hill Street, Montgomery Street, Pickens Street, and Precinct Street. The exploding depth charges were heard for miles and the ammunition caught fire, spraying bullets in all direction. It also ignited several forest fires. Fortunately, there were no injuries to civilians or personal property on the ground. And then, a bit of history for, was it MA 250? Departing Boston the evening of April 18th, the Kings troops marched into Lexington around 5:00 AM to find a militia company of more than 70 men. The British forces rushed forward upon the town green and militia captain ordered his company to disperse. At some point, a shot rang out. Historians still debate who fired the first shot that became known as the Shot Heard Round the World. Okay. April 18th was also the date that Paul Revere and William Dawes made their famous ride to alert the countryside that the British were coming. We've got a lot. There's a lot of fun facts in today. Thank you for everyone that contributed.
There's one more on here. Did I miss one? The annual town meeting for 6:30?
Just the town meeting I missed, right? The annual town meeting will be held June 9th at 7:00 PM upon Aquit High School. Now, agenda number three. Let's go for the Town Administrator Report.
Thank you. So I heard back from Plymouth County that we can use surplus funds on projects, towards projects that went into deficit. We had a few projects that kind of went over. I think there was the Pavilion project in the Old Town Hall restroom. We had a project that went about $100,000 under, Clear Pond Park waterline. And so we can actually switch the funds around, which before that, we didn't think we could. So it's good news. We'll be able to supplement Paul's budget back again. So we met with Apex, the Parks Department, Mike Ellis, and I think that was it, to discuss next step on the Clear Pond study. They gave us two kind of concept plans. They're not final, but I'd like to probably forward to you guys probably tomorrow to get feedback.
Question for you and Drew. Are there any other unmet funds or things that ran over for any of the projects after these two get the supplemental?
There was one that we sent back $207,000, but that was unallocated.
Yeah.
So unfortunately, we had to send it back. And then tomorrow, I'm attending the Old Colony Regional Voc Tech High School Breakfast to discuss the debt exclusion process and the ballot initiative. And that's all I have.
Madam Chair, question. In your report, you reference the Duxbury override process. And you have a PDF in there.
Yep.
Did you include that in the packet or is that something you would distribute later?
It's just a link you can click. I can distribute it to you later, yeah.
I didn't think it was an active link.
Oh, really?
Worked for me.
Oh, did it?
Yeah.
I can send you it. It's fine.
As long as it's there. I'll go back if I can, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Anyone else? Questions? All right, moving on to Select Board Minutes of March 31st. Any comments?
Actually, I do. I may.
Absolutely.
Page five, first paragraph, three-quarters of the way down. Member Candido asked, "Are we not including the $5 million for the cell tower?" I think it's $2 million. That was $2 million?
Two or 2.5.
Did I say $5 million or? No, I think it just came in here as $5 million. I think it should be 2.5 or something. 2.5, yeah.
Somewhere between.
You're right. Definitely not 5.
Good catch.
I did have another one. Page nine. Last item, first paragraph, halfway down. It says here, "After member Candido asked about the school committee, member Fabian said they are not receiving stipends now." I think she meant to say, or it should be reflected that they're not receiving insurance now. So not the word "stipend," but replaced with "insurance."
Anyone else?
I did have something on the last... Oh, no, actually, it's fine. I'm good.
Okay.
Well, I make a motion to approve the Select Board Meeting Minutes of March 31st, 2025, with corrections.
I have a second.
Second.
Member Day. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Start down there.
Hunt, aye.
Plunka, aye.
Candido, aye.
Carbone, aye.
Aye.
Going to take an item out of order. And we're going to go down to... Item number 16, please. Thank you. This item is discussing a possible vote on the request for the Planning Board to hire an interim planning consultant. If you would like to speak to it and identify yourself.
Michelle McEckern, I'm the Chair of the Planning Board. Kathy Murray, the Clerk. As I kind of hit on last Thursday, this is something that the Planning Board is definitely in need of. And Kathy can speak to it, I'm sure, because of the day-to-day. The experience that we had with Nancy Darfey, it was changing for the town, in my opinion, because her experience, her contacts, her connections, everything that she has as far as experience and the ability to get things done. It's devastating that we've lost her. And I think if we can retain her in an interim consultant manner until the role is filled, I think it would be important for the town because there's so many things going on right now. And Kathy, I don't know if you want to add to that?
Yeah, I mean, I'd have to agree. There were a few projects that we were trying to start to get the process going, which I think you referred to them in your memo. And I can certainly work on them, but I would really need that expertise to kind of get that ball rolling and kind of to guide me. And you know, some of them are very important for the town. And you know, last time, it took quite a while to find a planner, so I'd hate to see those projects be put on hold for up to a year.
And for example, today, we got an unfortunate email from Lloyd Gesner in regards to the Lakeville Country Club. We were talking about a senior overlay. We had excellent feedback from his presentation at Planning Board. I think you had excellent feedback for his presentation to you all as well. And unfortunately, he did let the town know that he's not moving forward. He'd like to, you know, work with the town in the future, if possible. He does, you know, he has expertise in that area. I know we're looking for senior housing, but it won't be with them and the Lakeville Country Club. So that is one of the items, is the owner of the Lakeville Country Club, he's willing to work with the town. We need to get something, you know, set for that area because it is such a large, important parcel in town.
There's no doubt we have a lot of stuff coming up. And thank you for bringing this proposal. When we talked last, was it Tuesday?
Thursday.
Thursday? One of those days that's not today? I had mentioned the way you had set about structuring it. I'm not sure that we could do that for procurement. I didn't get a chance to catch up with Andrew yet on if having a month-to-month like that could even be possible or if that is bending any rule that we have. That and going out for bid for whoever takes the role as a consultant as well for the RFP process. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, so I researched it again. You kind of play it in the gray zone when you do month-to-month. We don't really know if we're going to find anyone in a month. So when you go over that first month, to me, I would feel more comfortable doing a formal procurement process and having like a set term. We only then kind of feeling around in the dark for where we're going to land on the term.
And like hourly rates and the stuff that we're calculating too?
Right, because I mean, I think the number last week was given was $7,000.
Yeah. That's a very big contract for a month.
It is.
For there.
Right, well, that's what I said, "Up to, not over." Obviously, we're not talking $7,000 for, you know, part-time consultant unless it's a certain project that falls within that, you know, sort of monetary value. But...
Did you guys like point it out on how many hours a week you thought it might take, just on a general basis? Just from information?
No, because, as mentioned, there's different projects and it depends on what sort of direction we want to go in, what's the availability. So all those things would have to still be considered. But I would like to, you know, be able to work with the Town Administrator and HR Director to come up with something that works and, you know, for you all and for Planning Board and be able to utilize, you know, her services.
I'll open it up to the rest of the board. Questions, comments?
My biggest concern was the same one. You pointed out, Madam Chair, that, you know, procurement is done correctly, whatever the terms might be. I would, maybe I'll get corrected here in a second, but I would think that if we did put out some kind of contract with others that we have to put in, as long as X amount of days of notice is given, that contract can be terminated if we did find somebody. So at least the terms can be set. That's my biggest concern right now. Having gone through two planners, I'll say relatively quickly in succession, I also have concerns over, are we looking for the right people? Are we asking them to do the right things? Is part of this...
Meaning, is it the right job description?
Is it the right job description? Do we have them working on the right things? I had some concerns about things that took place while the most recent person was here. We could talk about it at some point. So I'm a little hesitant just to say to award a contract directly without going through proper process.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So I think we are mostly in agreement that we're probably not going to vote on this tonight. I think additional information is required.
I think you're right, yeah.
I would add that we should delay a vote on this until we complete our budget review, considering the fiscal challenges we are facing and some other higher, potentially higher priority staffing needs. Until, my recommendation is that we continue researching the procurement rules. I'm on board with that and Member Day. But potentially delaying this until we as a committee come up with a longer-term solution to solving some of these immediate financial challenges.
Do you have an idea, like when you're, we're saying like right after? Budget is only one more week. So just write that out there.
Yeah, I understand and agree. And I think we're going to have some additional, we know that.
We have nothing but bad news for everybody.
Right, so. And I have some ideas that I'd like to discuss at that next meeting.
All right, very good.
I have one thing I'd like to just... I believe you had done some research or had reached out to a couple of different consultant agencies and gotten some quotes for work. Have you done anything with that at this point?
So, I mean, I'm still in contact with them. You know, I let her know that we had gone in another direction when we hired the planner. She was happy for us. She said, "Keep us in mind." It was a planning partners, an attorney and planner, rolled into one that we had gotten. And I mean, even those, the prices were substantial. So it's not like it's going to be less going with someone else. I just felt like Nancy having the...
Do you remember what the prices were, off the top of your head?
No, I don't, unfortunately.
Coincidentally, I was actually looking at that for the CPC plan in Acushnet. And it was $200 an hour.
Okay, thank you. And it was, but there was a per project as well?
That I didn't see on the...
I think it was like a range that was given, like something to something.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think it...
But it was in like the $5,000 range, like 2 to 5 for project? Or $200?
Yeah, I didn't see that. I was really just looking at the per hour.
Per hour, okay. Big dollars.
Yeah, fortunately.
Big, big, big. And I mean, I understand the financial constraints, but obviously, we're still in 25-budget year. We have a few months until the new budget. So we got to get somebody in here ASAP. And to delay it, like I said in the memo, you know, we talked about being proactive rather than reactive. To not have somebody in this role is really creating that whole problem again where we're going to be reactive instead of proactive. And without someone in this position, which, you know, it would be great if we have someone else come along that has this experience and, you know, fits what we're looking for, but I think it's going to be a long road. And I think, you know, I understand the financial constraints, but I don't think this is something to put on the back burner, just knowing that there's other positions in town that are not filled at this time either. And, you know, when things fall through the cracks or, you know, big developments come into town and everybody's wondering why, I think, you know, this is why. Because we're not filling, you know, this need.
Actually, Andrew, I know we put that job description out a few weeks ago, two weeks ago now? Have we started interviewing at all or are we waiting?
Still waiting. We've gotten a handful.
Okay.
Still evaluating.
Okay. When's the end date on that?
I think it was 30 days from the posting. I think there's another week left, maybe?
So that's another week left? So I think all things are converging for next week for like knowing what's going on? But I, do you think if this board has even an inkling that we might not have the right job posts, we should probably get together on that sooner rather than later? If we think, you know, if we're out hiring and we think maybe it's not the right job description?
Didn't, Madam Chair, I'm sorry. Didn't we just look at this job description back in December? I think it was?
It's probably a nice start. It's probably September, October.
So...
I mean, we're in a bad position, right? We've got two positions not currently filled, four more positions potentially not being filled. We're using 400-plus thousand of free cash to balance the books at the moment. We still don't know what the state's going to deliver. I don't know. We're scraping the bottom of the barrel right now. I'm just not comfortable right now saying, "Yeah, let's go ahead and do this." Which is, I don't enjoy saying that, but we are in a relatively precarious situation.
Well, let's table this and have it come up on another agenda at the end of the 30 days for the job posting. And then if we can all get together and have a productive conversation on if there's something in the job description we don't like, if we don't have the quality candidates, obviously, and we don't have someone of mine, do we want to go like a quick, short term? Do we want to do something that's a long term, but maybe a part-time role, long term? Maybe like a hybrid of both worlds where we hire someone for part-time for just project and coordination of 10, 15 hours a week in order to do something relevant with the position without paying consulting-type fees per hour? Because it seems like if we could get someone part-time or put someone on in that type of basis where we give them steady hours and they're not worried, you know, from week to week, what they're getting and they get a steady dollar amount, we'd pay a lot less per hour than the, you know, the 200 or the 150. Because those are, that's city rates, that's big money.
Another concern I also do have is Nancy is full-time somewhere else. And so I don't know how much she'd be able to give us. You know, it's a big time commitment. And she's working during the day and, I don't know. I don't know if she'd be able to really tie into us during the day when we're all like working on stuff, you know?
Did you have any insight, if there's any conflicts there?
I mean, she did mention that Thursdays are free, so she could potentially attend meetings and that, I mean, she thought that she would have the bandwidth for specific projects.
Okay, so Thursdays were free?
They were, yeah.
Okay.
And like I said, I mean, we're looking, it's all well and good. Looking at this part-time, you know, changing the role, that's great, you know, starting in July. But like I said, we're going to, we're in the middle of April right now. And that's a long time to go, especially heading into spring, summer development season, to be without. So...
I agree. I agree. We have to make some decisions. But whatever we're going to do, we're going to do it by the books as much as we can.
Oh, right. I'm just hoping expedi- expeditiously, at least.
I understand.
One small question, if I may, for Andrew, probably. Sorry, I kind of catch out guard. But like for this type of role, if we do like a tenant-on-tenant contract, are they going to have to carry any kind of insurance on their own, whomever it is?
Yeah. Similar to what Todd did with us. Carried insurance, liability, all that.
Do they have to be in LLC or just not, like?
I don't think... I don't know that offhand, but you would definitely need to have insurance.
Because I know both Todd and Carol and everyone else that's contracted with us has been in LLC for that very reason. For errors and omissions, et cetera, et cetera, for coverage. Okay. Could you check that out?
Yeah, definitely.
Anything, motion to table? Do we need one second?
I don't know.
Always did it procedurally. Any conversation, anything, nothing? All right. Punk?
Punk, aye.
Plunka, aye.
Indi, do aye. Carbone, aye.
Aye.
All right. Tabled until...
April 20th?
30 days, oh, like 30 days.
Well, that's on 30 days. That's the next meeting we have.
Okay.
Standard setup, so.
Okay, so we have a date. Okay. I want you to make sure we have a date.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. We have five more minutes. Do we have 6:15? Do we have Article 6, Agenda Item 6? All right. Discuss impossible vote to appoint additional positions for Select Board reorg. So Chair, me, Vice Chair voted Brian. Director of Veterans Services is the first item. Brian, you're the current person. Would you like to remain on or would we like to open it up?
I would be happy to open it up.
Do you have a nomination?
Anybody interested? It's a very light role.
I know someone that might be interested.
There's been a grand goose egg of asks from the Veteran Service Agent to this role in the last year, but perhaps that could change.
I think someone might be able to find some tasks and insert themselves.
I would be interested in that.
I'd like to make a motion. I nominate Chris Plonka.
Second motion?
Do we go through it individually or do we just go through it all at the end? Okay. Vote?
Punk, aye.
Plunka, aye.
Indi, do aye.
Carbone, aye.
Aye.
Representative to the Plymouth County Advisory Board, currently Leah Fabian. And who, if anyone, is interested? Don't all, don't all raise your hands at once, guys? Plymouth County Advisory...
Do we know the...
Time commitment?
The time commitment or the hours of...
It's like once a month, I think.
Once a month, if you want to go.
Yeah, and it is a daytime meeting, if I'm remembering correctly. Tracy, it's a daytime, is it like Thursday, once a month, at the end of the month?
Once a month, it's during day.
Yeah. We can go back to that if no one's interested. I'll hold on to that. Parking clerk is currently Maureen Candido. I think I know someone that would be a fantastic parking clerk. Just fantastic. Does anyone want to do it?
Are you going with tradition here?
Yes. The new person gets parking clerk.
Sounds excellent.
I nominate Paul Hunt for parking clerk. Second? I have any discussion?
Just the fact that you get to schedule around your schedule and you'll work with Tracy on, you know, the issues that will come in front of you.
Okay.
So it's not any set time. So you'll get to work around your schedule.
It's good times. It's good times. No one ever shows up. I had one person show up in like five meetings, so it was good.
You can get a ticket book back.
Yeah.
That's excellent.
Good times. All right.
It is no hope.
Brings back memories.
Don't even bother. Roll call?
Punk, aye.
Plunka, aye.
Indi, do aye.[1687.88] Carboni eye.
Day eye.
Budget FY twenty-six, no one was appointed?
Nope.
Was anyone like to be the liaison to the budget?
I feel like last year we deferred to the TA and said, do you need anybody?
Well, I think if anyone doesn't want it, we should defer to the TA as they are the closest to it. At all times.
I would just take it off. I don't even think we need it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think times have changed.
School Department Liaison, currently Brenna. Do we have anyone that is interested in the schools?
I have a little interest.
A little bit of interest, anyone else?
Nobody else is interested?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion. I will second the motion. Mr. Plonka. Any discussion? If not, let's take a vote.
Hunt eye.
Plunk eye.
Indi do I. Carboni eye.
Day eye.
COA Liaison. Currently Leah. Do we have anyone specifically interested?
Some question, but where we do like the the we circle through the meetings each other, does this person do more than that?
I have not seen that person do much more than that, just brought, they brought some construction stuff forward when it came time for, you know, a project and they headed that project up. I think we're pretty shored up for that type of stuff for a while with the new addition of the food pantry.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I do know that Leah was attending the cafes on Fridays. That was her main, you know, besides doing once a month.
She only, I didn't.
Yeah, we rotated that, we decided to rotate that.
Yeah, she was going a lot. She was going more than once a month.
More than the monthly.
She was going, yeah.
Got it.
That's a bad time slot for me.
We can come back to it if we would like, come back to it. Park Commission Liaison. Currently Brenna. Does anyone have?
As a former park employee, that would bring back more fond memories.
Well, then I am all for creating and recapturing fond memories.
Excellent.
Make a motion, Paul Hunt.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hunt eye.
Plunk eye.
Indi do I. Carboni eye.
Day eye.
Regional Finance Committee. Currently Brian Day.
I know someone with far more interest and knowledge in the school department than I do.
Chris Plonka is gonna be the busiest person on this select board, I'm not quite sure.
Said it before, school, school community has passion.
Yep, is anyone else interested? Okay, Chris Plonka, I make a nomination for Mr. Plonka.
Seconded.
Right, any discussion, discussion?
Hunt eye.
Plunk eye.
Indi do I. Carboni eye. Day.
Day eye. I was looking ahead on the list.
Union negotiations. We don't have anything coming up for union negotiations this year, next year we do.
They all end, I think, this come in June.
Oh, they do end this June, I thought it was twenty.
This June or twenty-six?
I thought it was twenty-five, maybe I'm, no, yeah, twenty-six is what I mean.
Yeah, yeah, I knew it, yeah. So it is twenty-six?
They'll be starting negotiations this fall.
I'd be happy to be part of that if no one else wants it, if no one else wants it, I would also be very happy to not be a part of that.
It's all yours.
All right.
Make a motion.
Nominate Maureen.
Second.
Is that to include the schools as well?
Right, that was.
Oh. No, usually the schools is the TA. Is that? Was that just recent or is that?
That changed this time around.
They actually asked for a representative, they did.
We voted a specific individual to go, and so if I remember right, somebody please correct me here. We'd voted as somebody to go and listen and basically be there for the discussions. And then I think the school committee then voted to allow those people to have a vote at the table.
So that person should be the person with all of the school stuff, then if, but because obviously.
It's not like on the list, but I remember us voting it.
We did vote it.
So would we separate this out into Union Negotiations Town, Union Negotiations School?
However you want to word it.
I would recommend that.
Yeah, obviously, if you have someone working with schools on everything, you don't want to add a new face into the mix with someone already there, so. I would segregate it out and add Mr. Plonka for the Union Negotiations for the school.
I nominate Member Plonka for school union negotiations.
Second. All those in favor of Candido for Union Town and Plonka for Union School?
Hunt eye.
Plunk eye.
Indi do I. Carboni eye.
Day eye.
Right, Capital Expenditures Committee.
I would actually enjoy this one, I've thrown my name in the hat a few times and hasn't landed yet.
Oh, it will now. I'll nominate Brian Day. I second that nomination.
Do I regret this all of a sudden?
Any discussion? It'd be easy this year, nothing.
That's true.
Member Hunt, how do you vote?
Hunt eye.
Plunk eye.
Indi do I. Carboni eye.
Day eye.
The Economic Development Committee. Anyone interested before we set about nominating?
Madam Chair, can you refresh my memory, the makeup, the, I don't know.
It was.
You sent out the charter.
We're actually, it's gonna be on the agenda to amend.
Yeah.
To add a planning board member as well as a FinCom member.
Correct, so it's a nine-member board.
Oh, that's way too big now.
Stop, stop scaring him. Yes, but it would be, because it would have two alternates, so it's really a seven-member with two alternates, if that sounds less horrible.
It would sound more horrible.
It could, refresh my memory, the makeup?
Yes, it's right here, Select Board, Planning Board, FinCom. The charge is not here. Select Board, Planning Board, FinCom, three members.
Three.
Three at large.
Three at large.
And there's one more.
And Select Board, you got that.
Item nine.
Yeah, I'm looking right now, so.
There's no charge in there. I didn't see it.
Yeah, there's, it's one Select Board and four at large and two alternates.
Four at large, got it.
That's current though.
Oh. I was looking at the wrong thing, sorry.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
We have to keep in mind the school committee has a meeting at seven, so we gotta get them out of here.
I will.
If at all possible.
Hustle through, I will table this at Economic Development Committee and move to Agenda Item Number Five. Thanks for waiting, everyone, I appreciate it. All right, I call to order this meeting of the school committee and the Select Board. And I need a motion to appoint Robert Marshall to the Old Colony Regional Vocational Technical High School Committee for a term ending on May first, twenty twenty-eight.
So moved.
Second. I'll second that.
Okay, is there any discussion?
He's done a fine job.
He's done a great job.
And I'm glad to see that he's interested in continuing.
Any comments, questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I noticed we have a new member on this committee, could you just tell me your name?
Melinda Richards.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, we can go to a vote, I'll just go right around, all those in favor? Day eye.
Eye.
Eye. Hunt eye.
Plunk eye.
Indi do I. Carboni eye.
Day eye.
It's unanimous. And while the moderator doesn't usually say anything, I'm going to say that Mr. Marshall was my eighth grade teacher and I think it's absolutely phenomenal that in his retirement, he continues to do so many wonderful things on the part of education for this town, and we're very lucky to have him. And I'm not getting graded on that. So, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? We are adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
It's good to see you all, love this meeting. All right, everyone, we're going back to Agenda Item Number Six, Economic Development Committee. Make a motion to appoint Member Carboni, because I noticed your name isn't on here.
I know. I didn't see you pick anything. No, I I'm very interested in in pursuing this, I know we started it many, many years ago, it was up and running, done some great work and then some things changed, COVID, and and kind of just took a recess and I think now that we have revisited it and we have a plan in place and I'm in charge, I think we're gonna see some action.
All right. Made motion and had, seconded?
Second.
Second. Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Hunt eye.
Plunk eye.
Indi do I. Carboni eye. Dan, what's going on?
Day eye. He's teaching our TA a bylaw.
Nice, nice.
Before we get there.
Nice. Emergency Planning Committee, currently Lorraine Carboni.
This has not, I think we had one meeting last year where everybody came together. I'm not even sure, I think it was just a generalized topic, because it's a requirement, I think, from the fire chief who put it together, so.
Is anyone interested?
Considering the work that I did with the storm ready certification last year, we're working with Deputy Grant, so I'm familiar with the requirements and the annexes, so I'd be willing to volunteer for that.
So moved, I'll second that. Anyone else interested? Okay, roll call.
Hunt eye.
Plunk eye.
Indi do I. Carboni eye.
Day eye.
Energy Advisory Committee.
This is a light lift, we haven't met in two years.
That is a light lift.
So typically, you know, we'd come together, I know that there was one vacancy and we do have one person that's interested. It's usually right now, just it would be the updates on green communities and any other initiatives, so it really is a light lift.
Is anyone interested?
I'm happy to remain doing it, it is light.
Make a motion for Lorraine Carboni.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Hunt eye.
Plunk eye.
Indi do I.
Carboni, eye.
Member Carboni, you're still on the Fire Station Building Committee, I would probably recommend you stay on as we are rolling this to its last portion. Does anyone have any? Okay, I'd make a motion for Member Carboni.
I'll second that.
Motion is second, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Hunt eye.
Plunk eye.
Indi do I. Carboni eye.
Day eye.
Didn't we consolidate the Energy Advisory Committee with the Middleborough GNE at at one point, no?
I don't think so.
No, I don't think so.
Middleborough GNE Commission Ad Hoc Member, I was the, at one point, and you just went to attend the meetings when they held them. And they're usually at night in the Town Hall in Middleborough at six-thirty for an hour. And it was more just to attend, we didn't have any vote or anything, it was just, we were just there.
I think they've been Wednesday nights typically, or at most recently, if that's always the case.
Yeah.
I can't, I I was on that and I couldn't make the meetings, so I think.
It got to the point where I couldn't either.
I will, I will take any interest, if any, anyone, anyone? Let me just table this to get back to. DEP Subcommittee, the Dam Management Committee. Which always gives a chuckle. Currently Leah Fabian. Do we have anyone that is interested in working with the Assawampset Pond Complex and Committees and Water Boy?
No, but question, is this the the whole APC thing just worded differently?
This is the Pond and Dam Management, so this was the one that we used to go down to New Bedford for. So it was like the APC, but it's not the APC.
Well, now I'm curious, because Leah's been on APC forever, but it's not like listed here. Should it be?
I think they just attend, I think she just attended the APC meetings. Because the APC was a to- is a totally different board, I think she just attended.
Oh, okay, it wasn't something we had to.
No, we didn't, we never appointed anybody to that.
Madam Chair? Nancy Yates is the APC Representative for the Town. She's appointed in July.
So she's the official rep for the town, but it used to be the TA and then one of the Select Board members.
Isn't Nancy also the manager that's paid by APC?
How?
That might be something.
How does that work?
I don't know. You have to abstain from every vote, I don't know.
Tracy, can you explain how someone can be the manager in a paid position and the representative from a town?
She's been it for a long time, I don't know.
That's the worst answer ever. Because it's always been that way.
Probably since it was formed, she probably was, she was representing the town and then she had a job.
Can we table this and and have a a discussion with legal on?
The APC?
Yeah, on the APC in general, and if we're doing it the wrong way, and we have been for a very long time. It's a grand tradition.
The Dam Management Meeting, if I can, because I used to attend those, I was very active in it, it's, it was usually once a month. You know, during the day, the Bedford, Taunton Representatives, even our Senator, we had representation there. Our representative usually came to the meetings and basically it was just a sharing of information, there was no action taken from this particular group, we had no authority. It was more of, okay, we have a concern with pond levels, let's make sure that we get this information back to our communities. So.
The only action item I do remember us having was when we got the hundred thousand dollar grant for clearing the weeds, the mill foil out of the pond, and we couldn't do it because we have the the Red Belly Cooter. Yeah, but that was the only action, I remember being part of that.
We had to ask Serpent to be the agency in which the money was funneled through. So we, because because that particular board, it's not even a board, it's just a meeting.
Is this, is this something that would be better delegated to like the Conservation Agent or something or?
It's it's not even that, I would say that even Andrew would probably.
I went to one, you went a lot, so I mean, if anyone wants to.
And it's a good relation.
Yeah.
Shipbuilding opportunity.
But we never appointed anyone?
So it was just, it was the town administrator that always went.
I know that, but I I remember Leah being there the whole time.
Well, then maybe.
The DM Management, Leah's been appointed for that for a couple of years.
Just as a meeting rep, I guess?
Yeah.
Okay. Rent Control Board is now the whole board. Town Hall, Building Reuse Committee, I think that's actually me.
That is you.
I would still like to continue on if anyone, unless anyone has a real passion for it.
Is that, that lead to?
We need two members, that's why I had, we we need one.
Thanks, Tracy, appreciate it. Other member that's not Maureen Candido.
I mean, I'd be interested unless others have an interest in it.
I nominate Brian, I second. Roll call vote.
Hunt eye.
Plunk eye.
Did anyone want to revisit any of the blank ones?
Carboni eye.
Okay, sorry, Carboni eye.
Madam Chair, there are three.
Day eye, I said it.
There are three Policy Subcommittee that didn't make this list, Tracy, we need to make sure that we add them, we have the Policy Subcommittee, Communication Subcommittee, and the Municipal Citizens Academy Subcommittee.
And IT.
And the, oh yes, and the IT.
Funny, I had three, but I forgot one of them that you.
And I forgot that one.
Aw, together you guys are like a team. All right, do those committees have charges and memberships and stuff?
Oh, yeah, oh, okay.
Yep. All right, so what we didn't vote is the COA Liaison and the Plymouth County Advisory Board. If anyone has any interests in either of those or in the the MGNE and dam.
Andrew, do you attend the Plymouth County Advisory Meetings, no?
I don't, but I could.
I mean, I'm not gonna add extra, you know, meetings to your, I just thought you were already going.
I will take it, no worries, I will take the.
All right, I'll nominate Maureen to the Plymouth County Advisory. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you for taking it.
Roll call vote.
Hunt eye.
Plunk eye.
Indi do I? Reluctantly. Carboni eye.
Day eye.
And then the COA Liaison, yeah, you can put me down for that, that's fine. All right, I nominate, I would do it happily. Member Carboni.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Hunt eye.
Plunk eye.
Indi do I.
Carboni eye.
Day eye.
All right.
So we're gonna revisit the DEP after speaking to the APC?
On the QT, yes.
I don't think it can be on the QT.
Nothing could be on the QT. Yeah, so the the Middleborough GNE and the DEP are the only ones left. We can talk about it at another meeting. I feel like we're missing something. Oh, we don't have ZBRAC anymore.
No, but we should.
We should.
That's, I I think that should be something we bring back ZBRAC.
Yep.
Do you remember what ZBRAC stands for?
Yep, the Zone. Yep, the zoning board, zoning bylaw review advisory committee.
We didn't have it for a while because there was a big coding project that went on. So there was no need for it, but that was three years ago. So I'm going to guess ZBRAC should come back from the dead at some point.
It was a very involved, yes, and they did some good work. They brought a lot of bylaws.
But a lot of the things that we're talking about for town meeting right now would have been a great ZBRAC conversation. And they would have been able to deep dive on it in a way that we couldn't because of time and necessity. So I would love to see that back on a meeting to add ZBRAC back to our list of committees. It was very important to kind of get us all on the same page on our bylaws.
Madam Chair, we also need to bring the website up to date. All of the new committees are still missing from the boards and committees.
Got it. Tracy, is that, is that all you to add those on?
I'm happy.
I know the elected ones were done. Town Clerk went on and did the elected ones. So I haven't gone through.
Like zoning board of appeals is appointed and all of these new ones are missing, I think.
Yeah, I don't think those are up there. Can we get that done by end of the month?
Sure.
Is that, is that you? But is that you, Tracy, or is this?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right, I didn't know if it was, I didn't know if it was left.
Yep.
So with those four? You want to talk about the policy communications? It wasn't on the agenda. I didn't know if we wanted to add it on or do it at another time. It's, I mean, we can, but, I mean.
Policies down a member. Communication never got enough to be established.
Right.
And the municipal is, was Maureen and I.
Yep.
And IT was Brian.
Right now.
So I would say continue on because it hasn't been a full year since these have been in effect and they haven't really got off the ground. But communications.
I'll take that one.
You will take that one? Anyone else interested in being on the Communications Committee? Is it one or two?
It was just one person. I'd like to bring the charge back if I can. I'd just like to amend it slightly. Brenna did a beautiful job putting it together. So professional, looking like for the graphics and everything. But I think that, you know, we can expand a little bit more on, on that and, you know, do a call. Because I know that there's some people out there that absolutely want to serve in, you know, some of these subcommittees. So let's.
Yeah, so for, for the new members, just a few months ago, we made up some new subcommittees and we haven't had a chance to have more than one meeting on them yet. So we'll probably go through a cycle and then go through them again. But yeah, appointing them twice in the same year is kind of odd.
Could you have that list?
It is, it is the Policy Subcommittee. And that was myself and Leah from the board. So we would need another member from the board. It was the, um, the IT Committee, which was one member of the Select Board, just Brian Day. The Communications Committee, which Carboni was interested in, and the Citizens Leadership Committee, which was two of us. It was Member Carboni and myself. Yeah, so right now we only need one new member for the Policy Subcommittee. And the charge of the Policy Subcommittee, I don't have in front of me, but it is basically two parts. Looking at old policies that we have, they're out of date, you know, like if, you know, what are some of the ones that we have, like?
Using recycled materials, 1998?
Yeah, like just really, really stuff that is left in existence and, and all that. And then new policies. I brought forward two new policies. One was a code of conduct policy and one was a policy regarding how we use legal counsel and trying to wrap our hands around the pricing. Yes. Yes, that is, those are both in there.
So there's a vacancy on policy.
Vacancy on policy.
Probably worth clarifying as well, it's Select Board policies, so not.
Yes, just Select Board.
Good, good.
Yes.
I got experience writing policies, so I'd be interested in.
I'll nominate Blanca. Any discussion?
Good look.
Roll call vote.
Hon, aye.
Blanca, aye.
Candy, do I?
Carboni, aye.
Day, aye.
Madam Chair, may I request the charges for the other, because I have for references?
Absolutely. You have them all, Andrew, all the charges. Can you make a copy for both of our new members?
Yeah, I can get them.
Yes.
For paper? I have enough paper.
I like paper sometimes, though. Admit it.
While we're speaking of policy, do you know if Member Fabian brought back the binder with all the printed copies?
No, I have not seen or heard of it. Yeah.
Because I don't know if there's ones in there that we don't have other copies of.
Probably.
So knowing how we typically operate, probably.
Yeah. It's written on like parchment.
Yeah. I think I, Madam Chair, I think I know the answer, but are we saying that we may only have copies in a binder? We don't have them electronically?
I would say that she scrounged up copies from millions of places and some of them were on the computer. Some were in a dusty file. Some of them were in the Select Board Office. I think that would be an accurate representation.
I knew the answer.
Of where we.
Questioning your decision?
Feel good about yourself now, do you?
Talk more about in the future where we'd like to go with leveraging today's technology.
Yes, that would be lovely. Leveraging.
I'll work in partnership with the IT Committee.
Was that all of them? Did anyone think of anything else that we missed? We seem to have a few holes here, so.
Let's get the sheet filled out.
Yeah. All right. Onward and upward. Item number seven, Agenda Item Number Seven. Discuss a possible vote to appoint Select Board Member to the Serpent Commission. Is everyone familiar with Serpent on the board? The Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District is kind of our go-to for policy setting, for zoning, for maps, for all things that we need additional support, professional support for relating to planning-related technical assistance. Is there anyone specifically interested in being this year's Select Board Member?
I'll speak to what is, if it's all right through you, Madam Chair.
Sure.
What the position's all about. They meet the last Wednesday of every night. We're, we're still meeting remote. So it's all the communities in the area that make up Serpent. Forgot the, the number of list. Is it 31, maybe? Communities, so there's a representation whether from a planning board member as well as the Select Board or their delegate. So we could actually delegate this to a person too. So there's two people from Lakeville. Means that typically an hour, hour and a half, there's always a, a presentation from somebody. We've had MBTA come in, we've had the South Coast Rail come in. You know, all the things that are happening down in the South Coast, whether it's down on the waterfront or windmills or. So it's a collaborative of all of our sister communities that come together with issues, share issues. Serpent's been a great resource for us.
Wonderful. So we've done two different things in the past. At one point, up until probably fairly recently, the board nominated a nominee and that nominee was usually the TA. And then two years ago, three years ago, then we ended up having a Select Board Member. I would say, and this is my own personal opinion, that Andrew's plate is too full to add him at this time. You can tell me I'm wrong, but I don't think I am.
Well, I do, I do a lot of work with Serpent outside of that, so it's.
Yeah, but is it something that you're interested in doing? Or, you know, in the future, we could always revisit, but I would just worry with the amount of.
I'd say perhaps in the future, I'd think whoever is on it could, we would meet and say, if you hear anything interesting at one of the meetings.
I know I would forward stuff to the TA's office.
Oh, yeah, it's a great, it's a great resource for people to get together and share some of the things that are going on in town, in their towns. As they, as we all seem to be experiencing similar things at a similar time. That being said, anyone interested in the position?
Not at this.
If nobody's interested, I will continue to be the representative, but.
Brian, did I, did you say something?
I said not at this time.
I will nominate Lauren Carboni.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hon, aye.
Blanca, aye.
Candy, do I?
Carboni, aye.
Day, aye.
Congratulations.
When it comes back around, if the pond thing needs to be, needs representation, I'd be happy to do that.
Open it up again? Excellent. Open up.
Well, I didn't know, I thought we had to check with the APC first, but.
Oh.
All right.
Well, that would be the other part. Yeah, that could be something else. We should come back. Yeah, we'll come back to it.
I'll remember you.
Fondly thank you for volunteering.
This is one of the reasons why implementing a five-member board was like such a priority with all of the tasks in addition to the meetings. These are, you know, very important parts of community outreach and being part of, you know, smaller committees. And having three members do that was difficult as far as being able to make time for everything. Item number eight, discuss a vote on articles to send to Town Council for review for the annual town meeting warrant, which is this piece of paper. Andrew, do you want to go through and list them out and answer any questions, please?
Yes. So for the special town meeting warrant, we have three articles. The first one will be the capital improvement program. These are the three the other night that Frank had mentioned for the transfer station. The retained earnings are kind of going to get closed out in fiscal '25. So this would be to spend the final $80,000-ish and change on those capital projects with the transfer station. Article two would be capital article transfers. As in the past, there's a lot of old capital projects. One example is Frank's had a, I forget what the original project was, but they transferred it at the fall town meeting to the roof at the DPW. So this one's going to be something like that with old DPW capital items. It's going to be transfers to new purposes.
So just unspent funds from other old projects?
Correct. Article three is the fire station water line. I put the ones in red as ones that were kind of iffy on my book. I wanted to get, kind of get feedback. This one is not necessarily tied at this point in time to, to do it at the, in the spring. This could be in the future. But it would be to spend old proceeds from the sale of the water tower at the landfill in the amount of $400,000. My reasoning for this was that I thought the funding for the fire station would be tight and this would kind of supplement the contingency of that project. But since we're not going to be borrowing for quite some time, or doing a final borrow, we have time to do this at any point in the next couple of years. So if you want to at this time, take questions on special town meeting?
Madam Chair, I have a question. The, um, the 400K is currently sitting where? Is it stabilization?
No, it's just some old, I'm not even sure what kind of account you would call it, but it's an old account or just, it has the proceeds from that original sale. And over time.
The water tower.
Right, yeah. If only with that, I just don't recall seeing a line item for that anywhere.
It's in an old revenue account.
Oh. That's all, it's in that account?
The balance, I, I put $400,000, but it's like 396. It's been spent out of over the years for different purposes.
Yeah, I can't remember what the original amount was. Anywhere between 1.700,000 and 1.2 million. I can't remember.
Water for water.
I'm also, I'm planning to have these vote one by one so people can not have an all or nothing vote. They can, we can make things pass as we all see fit. Because last time, I guess we had an all in one vote and there was some objections. So I want to make sure.
Yeah, but any member at any time can say, I opposed this article being on the warrant. So if there was problems with that last year, that should have been brought up at the time, not on town meeting floor.
If I can, I just have, with regards to the water line, I know that this is, you know, a way to allocate some funds for the project. Are we, do we exhaust all of our opportunity for infrastructure?
So I did apply for a federal grant for this.
Okay.
Remember that, um, one I sent around from Dana Hanson?
Yes.
So I did apply for that. So this might not be needed.
Right, so if that comes in, then, you know, obviously we wouldn't have to, but we're just trying to be a little proactive here.
Correct.
And as Andrew said, we do have time. So if it's not this meeting, we could kick the can down the road a little bit if that's possible to give us time enough to find out if we got the grant. When is the expiration or when is the notification period for the grant?
For that federal one?
Yeah.
I think they said they would tell us in like a month, like 30 days. That the deadline was, I think, April 1st.
Pretty impressive.
1st, April 1st? Yeah, I think it was April 1st, so then, because it's one, it's a federal, they, they go through it pretty quick. Basically, they take tryouts and then if they think yours is like worthy, they'll tell you. And if it's not, they'll tell you, sorry, good luck next year. So they're going to tell us pretty quickly if they're interested.
Okay.
Questioning the application, if I may. Did you, um, what did you put in for? Was it just the fire station or?
Just the fire station.
So my, my question would be, I'd look for a recommendation from Andrew, whether or not, you know, say that comes through. Would we want to consider just saying like, you know, a Main Street water line project? So that if we wanted to say, all right, we got the federal infrastructure funding to do the fire station, could we extend this?
Bedford.
Sorry, Bedford, thank you. Could we extend this pass fire station to get to the fields and then all the businesses that are, you know, along that line?
Were they super specific on the naming convention being the scope?
Wait a minute, for the article three, sorry.
For the federal one, I think, I actually think I actually put in potentially Commissioners Field. I'll have to double check that.
But I think I remember you saying that you were trying to get a broader scope.
All right, yeah.
I did get good feedback. This is probably three months ago now from Dana on doing something like this.
Yeah.
But.
Okay.
She might tell everyone that, I don't know.
Yeah. Everyone leaves happy.
I guess we can, we can call Dana. She gave us her card.
It was not a bad idea if we get the grant to somehow write it in a way that we can push it somewhere else.
Yeah. Perfect. All right.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions about the special?
Yeah, how do we decide what goes in special and what goes in annual? Anybody got that pop quiz answer?
Yeah, I do, actually. So the special, basically if you approve it, you can spend it the next day. Annual is July 1st.
How do you like that?
Basically, the effective, the effective date is when the town meeting annual is versus.
All this time I've been wondering, I should have just found you earlier.
The thing with us is it's like three weeks away difference. Most towns have it in like April, May, so there's like a month or two difference, but.
Yes, we have our election before the town meeting instead of after.
Yes, so this, this, these are mostly cleanup items?
Yep.
More or less, so.
Yes, usually special.
Yeah.
Clean up element.
No, um, no old bills this time?
We will at some point.
That'd be fall, wouldn't it, sorry?
Well, it could, it could happen at any point.
Yeah, true.
All right, on to the annual, Andrew, if you want to.
Yeah, so article one is the standard elected official salaries in the town budget. Article two is the parks enterprise account budget. Article three is the capital improvement program. For this one, it was capital stabilization. And then for article four, it was out of free cash. I figured just to split the articles up to make it cleaner when we take votes because capital stabilization is two-thirds, free cash is just majority. Article five is the standard OPEB article that the town does every year. Um, article five is the, uh, standard OPEB article that the town does every year.
It's one fifty this year instead of three hundred?
It's gonna be one fifty, correct?
Yep.
Um, article six is the standard article for CPA, set in the budget for that. Then article seven is an actual project that we'll be putting forward. Um, article eight is the unregistered vehicle bylaw, which would add the enforcement mechanism, the fining.
Question for you, Andrew?
Yep.
When we spoke with, is it Michelle Lurin Dazo? I think it was Michelle Lurin Dazo, about the, um, cor- correcting the enforcement provision. I thought she said doing just an enforcement provision bylaw and then having it overlay all the others. This doesn't look like that, this looks specific too.
I can double check that, that's, this is what I, I presented the issue and that's what they got back to me.
Okay.
It was Greg Corbo.
Because just in case we missed anything, it was anything that had a fine attached to it, we would be able to say, quote unquote, civil fine and, and, you know, delineate what that is as opposed to just catching the ones that we caught because something came up, we would be able to apply it over all of them, um, you know. Like a zebra. I recall that too. Like a zebra would, so if you could get clarification on that, that would be fantastic.
Article nine is the recall provision that we, um, had the joint meeting with, um, for. Um, article ten is an excess equity, it's just to accept MGL, chapter two hundred A, section nine A. Um, I think I'm sure everyone probably is aware that the excess equity law has kind of changed with the Supreme Court.
Yeah.
Case maybe three years ago.
Yeah, do you wanna speak to that at all, cause I don't think people at home, um, maybe they're not up on.
Yeah, there was a, essentially a date that was put, that you could essentially, when a tax title property comes into the town's possession, how much can we sell the house for, essentially, is the wrap-up of it. Um, before that date, you can, basically, we can sell the whole property and take the whole value of it. After that date, we have to then give back what was put in by the original owner.
Yeah, so the Supreme Court weighed in on it two years ago, whoosh, years ago, said that's equity theft and that, um, towns shouldn't be engaging in it. Um, it's nothing we've ever done here in Lakeville, um, uh, it, it's not anything we ever did or a policy we adopted. Um, and if anything, the select board made sure, everyone knew when it came up that that was not something they were interested in.
In fact, Madam Chair, I forget if this predates when you joined us, but, um, we held off on a couple of properties knowing that this final ruling was coming down to figure out what was allowed, what wasn't allowed. This is a little before you as well.
So it's to protect the people of Lakeville, because.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Madam Chair, could we just jump back onto article nine, the recall provision, how does that work? You gotta get free town to vote on the same, it's a?
Yeah, it has to be like a mirrored.
The same language, yeah.
So they have, I, I lost touch on that.
Yeah, they came in net with us in January?
About then, yeah.
Around January, um, and town council is working with both towns to make sure the language, um, is the same for both towns. Both town meetings have to vote the same vote in the affirmative for it to pass to go to the region because everything is equal when it comes out there.
Whose town meeting is first this year?
I do not know.
Ours.
Ours is, so if there's any amendments, somebody has to make the same.
They have to go on town hall floor and make those amendments.
Pretty sure ours is.
Yeah, because it won't be within the two weeks to, to post it, so someone will have to high-tail it over to free town, otherwise it goes in committee and then it waits years before things get done.
We're saying we don't make any amendments, we pass it, free town makes amendments and passes it.
We have to bring it back.
We have to come back to our town meeting again.
Yes.
It's fall, special town meeting.
Whatever.
Whenever, yeah, we get, we'll get to it, but yes, it's very convoluted when you have a region, um, and other member towns that have to have the same things, but yes, our town council is working with both towns.
May I request a copy of that article now?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I haven't even seen it.
Copy two, or are you good?
Do we have it yet?
We, we have it, but they're still working out the kinks of it.
Yeah, we had one draft, I didn't know if we had the final draft.
That's fine, I'd just like to request a draft, whatever you have, the current version, please.
Yeah, believe it or not, it's actually, this is one of, first of its kind in the state because Lakeville and Free Town, we, we vote for both towns members and that's not really something that's done, so.
We had to complicate things, bringing that together.
I think that was you, Lauren, wasn't it?
Well, it was you, actually.
Yeah, but I'll send a draft in the morning.
Thank you.
Okay, that was article nine, article ten, uh, on to article eleven.
So article eleven, we were gonna change the zoning, kind of in that one sixty Bedford area.
Because it's not reflective correctly.
Correct, that one, there's a couple houses in that area that are not really, it's not, no one's really sure what they are really zoned at. Um, and so this would be to correct that, um, now this was something that Nancy was working on and so that's why it's in red, cause there's been really no work behind it, so this is just a placeholder at this point in time.
Does anyone have any comments on this?
My understanding on this one is, you know, when the complaint for one sixty Bedford came up and it started going back however many hundred years and they got to the point where it was like, so-and-so's property is this many links and chains away from here and like, at the end of the day, what our zoning map shows doesn't align with what the deeds say. So it's like part of the property on Win's Way is like, part of it is in residential, part of it is in business, which is what one sixty Win is. And when you've got business-to-business lots, there's literally no, um, what's the word I'm looking?
Buffer?
Buffer zone, you can have stuff wrapped in the property line. Um, so this, I think the idea was this would correct the Win's Way parcel to be fully residential since it is used as a residential purpose.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, zoning map trumps all as far as interpretation and so.
As we learned at the hospital.
Yes, that creates, uh, a problem when we have a discrepancy between, you know, what is written for it and then what is shown on the zoning map. So that's why it makes it important to get that cleaned up.
That would align them.
Yep, so you're saying you don't know if this is completed or?
It's not finalized yet.
It's not finalized.
But we can get, get it finalized.
Okay.
As fast as we can.
Um, I think it's, it's always good to write something as quick as we can.
I know, yeah, it's just.
If we've got something wrong. Um, moving right along?
Article twelve is to change the site review, a site plan review by law. Um, article thirteen is to add on to the definition of the excessively dwelling unit.
And these additional definitions are the ones that were pushed down from the state, um, two months ago, I wish.
Yeah, correct.
Apologize for interrupting, but do we have a draft on twelve? I don't think I was expecting to see that one, or I just forgot about it.
Yeah, I wanna say it.
Or if there's an elevator pitch version of what it does.
Yeah, so the planning board, um, approved it probably maybe a month ago.
Okay.
Yeah, but I can send it, it has, one, one area of it is that basically a lot more projects would come before site plan review and, um, would also have like a, like a working group of sorts that the, it'd be optional.
Okay.
Um, I can send it.
Yeah, that seems overly involved.
I'd like to read that one before I support it, but if planning's pushing it forward, then.
Yeah, planning already took a vote on twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
Alright.
Do we, um, when planning is taking a vote and putting the warrants forward, are they working with council on making sure that they're going through and all of these things are within their purview?
Yeah, I mean, they, they did work on article twelve.
Okay.
With Amy.
Okay, moving to fourteen.
Yeah, the zoning by law, they're gonna remove section two seventy dash seven point eight, it's just a minor.
Do you have that memorized, Brian?
I just looked it up online, accessory apartment, I guess.
Yes.
Is that because ADUs exist now?
I believe so.
Alright, if not everyone has that, can you make sure you send it out to the group?
Yep.
Article fifteen.
Article fifteen, I mentioned it in a couple of the budget hearings, but it's a compensated absences, um, article. Um, it's in red because obviously the budget's tight, um, in a perfect world, we could give twenty-five thousand to an article to basically pay out people when they retire, um, instead of out of their budget line. Um, I was probably leaning towards not presenting this at town meeting to save that twenty-five thousand for other purposes.
Hmm, question for you, procedural question. If we put that on the special town meeting and allocated that twenty-five thousand from old capital projects or old projects, would we be able to use it for salaries for this particular, where it's not a salary, it's a payout for retirement?
I'd have to look it up, but I'm pretty sure capital, you can do capital, capital, you can't do capital though, other purpose.
Well, I would know that you can't do it for like recurring, like payroll, but I didn't know if retirement could possibly be squeezed in there.
I can check, I've never seen that, but yeah, I can double check though.
Squeeze in everything, fill it with, every stone.
I have a question on fifteen.
Yep.
Um, I mean, does this just allow you to have the mechanism or do you have to fund it? If that, if that got passed through?
Um, there would, there would be a number tied to it in the article.
So put a dollar. I mean, what I'm saying is like, do you, does this establish the fund and then it gives you the ability going forward?
Yeah, come back and put money into it.
Yeah, I mean, if we just wanna say, get the.
Get a fund going, that's probably not bad.
Establish the bank account and if we shake the couch a little better, add more later.
Yeah, because usually when we know there's a retirement happening, we put it in their budget line, so they're covered. Sometimes we don't know there's a retirement happening with that, in that year and then we get caught in a situation where we don't have the funds to cover it and then we have to scramble.
So this, this is meant to avoid that problem in the future.
Very nice.
Um, article sixteen's gonna be, talks about later, but that would be for the removal of insurance for three elected boards. And then article seventeen is the, uh, Route seventy-nine related project and it's for the layout of Harrison Avenue.
And we have a handout for that one, upon voting in support tonight, I guess, right?
Yeah.
So. Do you wanna speak to article sixteen? For the new members?
Yeah, so when you're on the Board of Health, Board of Assessors and Select Board, you can choose basically to have health insurance. Um, if not, you can take a payout. Um, and so I forwarded an email from, uh, town council today, which basically kind of lays out what the mechanism would be for this, to get rid of it, I mean, so. Um.
And school committee also takes a stipend, but takes no insurance.
Takes no insurance.
There's a stipend.
And so insurance, as you know, is expensive, it's about between twenty and twenty-four thousand for a family plan. Um, so it can get up pretty high, if every single board and committee took that, it's eleven members, that's two hundred and sixty thousand. Luckily, ours is only fifty-five thousand of a hit, we only have a few people on family plans.
Yeah.
Most people take the payout.
And, um, I don't think it was confidential what council said about, you know, ensuring that we do it as a point in the future if we do it and not making anything like immediate or retroactive as, um, that sets a bad precedent.
Yeah, there's a lot of due process concerns.
Yes.
So.
Sounded like we could, but they don't recommend it.
Yes, all of it sounded like this is dangerous territory, um, stay out, so. I'm open for discussion on it right now because this is a good time to have discussion. Remember, Day, you brought it forward, so.
Yeah, sorry, I've been hammered on this one a couple of years now, I think. Um, are we going to whatever number or are we just talking to the article? Cause here's somewhere, isn't it?
Um.
Hundred twenty.
Two old business, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's an old business.
I wanna come back to it, that's fine too, no way, whatever you prefer.
Um, just, we can just talk about it.
Alright.
Might as well, it's on here.
Given the, you know, financial position we're in, um, as Andrew was saying, there's eleven positions that qualify and if, if you just think about the opt-out price, um, with those eleven positions, if the person were to take insurance and they were a single, they would take a single plan, their opt-out is twenty-five hundred a year. If they were to take insurance and they would need a family plan, but they don't, their opt-out is fif, five thousand dollars a year. So even if nobody takes insurance, look at a range of like twenty-seven, five, fifty-five thousand dollars a year just to say thanks for not taking it. If that suddenly spins and as he said, you know, all eleven suddenly get a family plan, which you never know in an election year what you're gonna get, uh, that bounces up to two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, it's a pretty big swing that you could have every year. Um, so given where we were, it seemed like we really need to look for places to cut. At the moment, there's only three people that actually utilize the insurance, no idea who they are, I don't know when their terms are up and everybody else is taking an opt-out, it's costing us a hundred and change.
Hundred and four thousand.
Hundred and four thousand dollars right now, significant and we're cutting positions that are less than that. Um, so nobody knows exactly when this started, um.
It predates all of our.
Yeah, Tracy went back three minutes like to nineteen ninety-three and like can't, and maybe even further, can't find any record of when it was like voted through.
Just was.
Um, it seems like it might have been, cause way back, the select board also did like more health stuff and assessor stuff and it might have been when they started splitting out those roles, they just said, oh, Andrew, get insurance and like it just kind of perpetuated. Um, so the thought was, you know, if, if we're in charge and we can vote it, fine, if we won't put it to the people, they can vote it, fine. I mean, it's another way to hopefully save some money and prevent some of the cuts that we're seeing in all these budget presentations.
So it won't prevent any of the cuts for this year? Uh, because we have to do it per council, it would be like twenty-twenty-seven.
No, council said town meeting could vote it immediate.
Oh, 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 yeah, but would you, would you, was there a taste to take people's insurance away while they're in the year?
You could make a motion to say, take the option away that those aren't utilizing it, you immediately recapture eight opt-outs. Forty, fifty thousand dollars probably.
So if we take out the opt-outs, we take out the insurance, we take out the opt-outs and leave the stipend intact?
Yep.
Okay, just.
I mean, I've also said I'd like to get rid of those too, but we're just talking insurance right now.
Does anyone have any questions or? Okay.
It's as quiet as it was last time, nobody even has a thought.
No, I, I, my only thing is, you know, somebody that's currently taking the insurance, you know, to, to end it. Um, that's the only.
Not only are they taking insurance, they're, if they're taking the stipend, they're counting on that as well.
I'm not following.
So the, um, not the stipend, the.
The opt-out?
The opt-out, so they're counting on that as well, that's part of their yearly budget as well. And I don't, I like to give people, I don't know, advanced warning on things going forward and not. It, it's easier to not give new people stuff than it is to take away stuff from existing people is my just overall, overarching theme i- in that.
I hear you, um, here comes the but, as an elected official, you probably shouldn't be looking at what benefits do I get by running for this position? And with the recall in place right now, anybody could lose that at any time. I know that's a pretty dark viewpoint, but things do change. You know, the motion on the floor could even be such that, I think I had some draft text written up, like, you know, goes into effect at the next election and at any point the position is vacated, whether they resign, recalled, whatever happens, buzz hits them. Um, and then you just get a, a rolling change over time. Twenty-twenty-eight, if we said we're not gonna change anything and just said like it's when seats get vacated and such, twenty-twenty-eight is when the final ones would roll off.
Okay, that makes sense.
So you'd be looking at fiscal twenty-nine by the time they all clean up.
Alright, just trying to wrap my head around the timing for all of this. Did we ask the people that are involved to weigh in at all? To give their opinion, any of the impacted people?
I have specifically not asked for any names of who's taken anything.
No, 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 but I just didn't know if anyone wanted to speak to it, for the impacted people.
I haven't asked the people, I can. I didn't know if this was really gonna be a thing, so I didn't wanna scare them and.
Yeah.
And it's only part-time elected, not full-time like the clerk.
Right, yes. Yes, Lou?
Just to make that clear.
Alright, um, is there anything anyone would like further discussion on?
No, I just, I do wanna follow up on the site plan review thing when we get a chance to read that through.
No, do we want the vote tonight or did we? Like, because we had a couple holdouts, do we wanna hold off on a few items? Or do we need it tonight for, to get Andrew, get the ball rolling for legal?
I'm looking.
Cause it was on our timeframe.
Yeah, I'm looking.
Cause I thought. Cause I thought we had to vote this tonight, I just wanna.
I mean, the vast majority of them have already kinda had
Yep.
Town council weigh in.
Um, yes, the vote tonight would be decided to town council to review tomorrow, because at your meeting on May fifth, there is time, but your next meeting is May fifth, hopefully. Um, so if you did this on the twenty-eighth, it really wouldn't give much time for town council to be able to dig into these.
Um, question for Andrew, are there any that like, you're, you've got the ones in red, are there any that you have like significant text missing yet, or we're most ready to roll?
Um. I think I have pretty much all the kinda texts, mostly ready to go by now. The only one I don't is Article eleven and number three, but three could, that's an easy one though, right up.
Okay, I'm gonna propose something, you guys let me know if you're on board. Um, I'm gonna let anyone say hold, uh, like kinda like town meeting, on anything that they want me to hold on for more discussion. Um, and I'm gonna write down all the holds, and then I'm gonna do one big motion with all of the articles that pass, so we can push that to Andrew quickly, so he can start working on those, and then maybe have some more discussion on the articles that have, uh, a vote coming towards them that might not be.
Quick question, if you have the town meeting scheduled perhaps, like, I know we're, we're voting to send them off to review, but why don't we actually vote in the final warrant?
Yeah, once our, um.
Cause we could still pull things if we wanted to.
We have voting on the warrant, May fifth.
Okay, so, there's no harm in sending them, I guess.
Is there anything anyone objects to and wants to call out in specific though? Don't wanna spend money. Two hundred fifty dollars.
No, I mean, I just, I don't think that we came to a conclusion on the sixteen, Article sixteen.
That would be my only concern.
I agree as well.
Adversely affected.
Yep, I, I agree.
Well, is, is that in the, the spirit of the article, or in the wording of what the article says?
For me, both.
So you don't think they should, you, you just in general think that that should be a benefit that remains?
Um.
Just for clarity.
I'm thinking stage it out, um, or and I might already have the answer to this, but i- is there any way we could have a different um, opt-out number than the town does for elective officials? Because it seems like the opt-out is the one that's being used more than the insurance. And I, I'm pretty sure that they can't, I think they have to have parity.
I think you have to change the, the, the insurance plan policy or something for HR to do that way.
To do the opt-out.
I mean, the, the like draft motion I've written, the end of it, um, you know, to be in effect at the end of fiscal year, pick a date, for all part-time elected officials, or at any time an affect, an affected elected position becomes vacant before the aforementioned date. So they could finish out their term with it, and then whoever's elected next, even if it's the same person, it would no longer be there. Unless we put a date in front of it.
Besides me and my objections to it, I'd love to open it up.
To, to clarify, it would remain in effect for your, for your current term? Is that how the article's written? That what you just said?
That's one version, yep, and we could say it ends on a certain date, right, so to, if you're as Maureen Lorraine's concerned, saying giving awareness, you could say we're end, just to pick a date, right, you could say we're just gonna end at June thirtieth, twenty-sixth. Right, next fiscal year's end. Or if the seat is vacated, or you could leave out the date and just say at the end of whomever's.
Final completion of the term.
Right. It would take longer, but you'd eventually get there.
But then that would be our decision. The boards, our decision.
Could do it either way, you could do us or town, yeah, cause they said if it's a.
Term, it would just be our vote.
I mean, it could be town meeting too, but we, we could.
Because it's so unclear when it started, like, I've just.
They couldn't find anything in any town meeting about it. It's really, it's, which is bizarre.
Town meeting. I mean, it's written on a rock.
I can remember one of the people that had it years ago, and he's been dead for decades. You know, and so it, it always kinda, the way that it was presented always kinda left a bad taste in my mouth that, you know, they get insurance for
For forever.
X number of thousands of dollars. But again, having been subject to having no insurance, I also don't like somebody to be just cut off immediately. That's a terrible feeling in itself.
And we're not in a great economic environment for individuals as well, and that weighs on me as just a person, not a board member, but, you know, you bring your whole self here, so that.
I mean, I, I kinda like the shot across the bow, you know, this is, this is coming, you know, at the end of this term or whatever, and I, the the fact that you get mu- get extra money because you didn't do it, kinda leaves a little bad taste in my mouth as well, you know?
But that's a, that's something that they do for the employees as well, so that's how that came about, because you had to kinda do both in order for it to be applied, if I'm remembering it correctly.
Um, Chair, I started in nineteen fifty-three on the minutes, and I got through to, I wanna say the late seventies, early eighties, and I could not find any votes that the select board.
But they had had it.
I don't know.
Oh.
All I know is before, as of nineteen ninety-three, it was in place. But I went from sixty-three up to like the late seventies, and I couldn't find where a vote had taken place at a select board meeting for that period. And I just stopped.
It doesn't mean it didn't.
Yeah, it doesn't mean it didn't happen.
Doesn't mean it didn't happen at the wife and I or the mugging muffin.
Yeah, right.
If I can, Madam Chair, they, um, we, as a select board, um, you know, I know with regards to the insurance, we've made the decisions with regard to the percentage, so when it was, what, twenty-five, seventy-five? And then it got changed to fifty-fifty, now it's, what, sixty-five, thirty-five?
Yep.
Depending on date of hire, I think.
Yeah, it's either.
Right, so that was under the purview of this board. So I know that there's decisions that were made with regards to the health insurance. And then the stipend, that was a select board decision. So, um.
I don't know any select boards that don't take the stipend.
I meant the opt-out, I meant the opt-out, the opt-out.
Oh, okay.
The insurance opt-out, but, um, so if it is, ends up being, you know, this board's appetite that it becomes our decision, we could vote on it at any time. If it goes to town meeting, it's if we were to end it, take it and weigh the insurance effective immediately. That's what we warrant the town meeting. Any other would be our decision.
I'm just not sure if we're still talking about the articles or old business, so I don't dare make any motions or anything.
I thought it was, uh, just the article, cause we were, we were voting to send them to town council.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
We could word the article to say, um, what could we say? We could say like effective. We don't know, like next year's election date, right, what, whatever annual election, twenty-twenty-five, for new, new people elected, right, it's like you and I are up next year, right, so two there, one on board health, one on assessors, you could say those ones are cut off, and then the others as they roll out. So you're not taking away from anybody.
Look, you are taking away, just not
How?
Taking away within the year.
Yeah. Are you taking away?
Upon completion of your term.
Cause it's something.
It's not your term, you get, you gotta go through election.
Yeah. I think that's semantics, I think.
Come on, I'm gonna read back old Scotty Brown here and say it's the people's seat, right? Getting a truck to drive around in now.
Yeah, it is the people's seat, for sure.
It's, yeah, it's a new term, new rules.
Yeah. Okay. Alright, so um, anyone have holds on any other items besides Article sixteen? I have a hold on twelve, on three, and on fourteen.
Madam Chair, is that three for the annual?
Article three special.
Okay.
Three special, okay.
And then Article twelve.
Article twelve, annual, Article fourteen, annual, and then as we just discussed, Article sixteen, annual, and everything else I'm smooth sailing. Is there anything besides those items? Article eight, Article eight, has a hold on it for unregistered vehicle. Mister Day, anything hold wise besides?
No, I don't think so.
Fourteen and twelve, or?
Did we kick, um, earth removal to fall maybe?
Oh, dreadful.
Yes.
That needs to be.
I probably would have if that was on there, but.
Can we bury that one in the fall place, bury earth removal?
Well, I didn't, I didn't hear, what was the, the reference?
There's an earth removal policy that will blow you away when you start to read it.
Yeah.
Complicated?
Complicated, um, in my opinion, allows you to remove way too much um, cubic yards of dirt before you need to get a permit.
And it's after the fact.
It's after the fact, like, it's, it's just a really, as far as policies go, you'll enjoy updating that one.
Yep, that's your first order of business, your first order of business.
Two thousand cubic yards or something you can remove without a permit? Think about how much that is.
Madam Chair, that was a mistake. It wasn't supposed to be that much, I know I wrote it.
Oh, really?
Sorry, Tracy.
I worked with town council on it, and, um, that, it wasn't supposed to be that much, I don't know when it became that much, but it wasn't in my original draft, I think it was five hundred cubic yards in my original draft.
Sounds more reasonable.
And then it just changed.
Ian and I don't know the last time we've updated the fee on it, it's like fifteen cents a yard.
We have not updated the fee because the select board could not agree on how to charge. So nothing happened with the fee, I don't even think there's a fee in it.
Fantastic. Let's not let that happen again. Get that going. So I'd like to make a motion to send Article one and Article two of the, of the special town meeting warrant on the list um, to council. So moved.
Second.
I was just doing the ones that don't have a hold on them.
Right, what are we waiting, what was, what are we waiting for on three, I guess, for my question, to send it or not send it?
Um.
Like, do we have time?
I was just gonna wait on the grant. If, if the grant came in.
When do we think that is again, sorry?
We're not definitely know, probably the next thirty days.
Cause we could do that in the next town meeting.
Madam Chair, that will be very close, yeah, for our advertising deadline, I don't think thirty days would allow us to get it published.
We're doing that in the fall, see, we don't get the grant, just kicking us the fall harmony timelines, I, no, okay.
We already borrowed for the full amount, so we'll just be taking off what we borrowed.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so. Yay, day.
Well, it's fine, as long as it doesn't pull anything up, we'll pull.
So, I'll just move forward with those. Did I have a motion? Second.
What's your motion?
You made the motion and I seconded it, so, yeah. Um, any discussion on Article one or Article two special town meeting warrant items? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote.
Plu- aye.
Plu- aye.
Can do that.
Carboni aye.
Do it.
Um, now moving on to the annual town meeting warrant, um, I'd like to make a motion that Article one, Article two, Article three, Article four, Article five, Article six, Article seven, Article nine, Article ten, Article Article eleven, Article thirteen, Article sixteen, and Article seventeen move on for town council to craft the language.
Question, Madam Chair, I just thought of this now, but if we send thirteen and not fourteen, could that get planning in a bind where we end up with like apartments defined in two locations and zoning bylaws?
Possible. I haven't read them, so.
I haven't either.
Read them again to make sure that I've got every nuance, so we could hold, um, I can make an amendment and pull Article thirteen out of that and do it together. I just, we haven't talked really a lot about the site plan by law review or the zoning bylaw
Should we just send them both?
Of what we're moving. I think we should send them all.
I think we should send them both.
Cause even if we don't agree with the site plan review, it's already, that's submitted by planning board, so we don't have any.
Oh, yeah, okay.
We don't have any say over it anyways, so these are submitted by planning board.
Alright, I will amend that then. Would Devon like to hear me read it again? Make a motion to, uh, to send Article one, Article two, Article three, Article four, Article five, six, seven, nine, ten, twelve, oh, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, sixteen, and seventeen to town council to review.
I thought you wanted to hold sixteen.
Did I say sixteen? I'm sorry, fifteen and seventeen. Removed.
Plug in.
Any discussion? Not hearing it.
It was painful, not hearing it, thank you.
I just wanna make sure we have time to send the rest of them.
Yep.
By the next meeting.
Well, at least now we have a much smaller list to focus in on, and I still would like more information on the site plan review bylaw and, uh, the zoning bylaw, just to make sure I understand all of that. Um, and then we can come back to the other ones, um, in our next meeting, which is next, twenty eighth, twenty eighth, and then finish these up, but this will give, um, KP Law time to write up all of these, um, and, and then have the, the extra small ones at the end. Because I think they've already probably written up the, uh, some of these as well, but save money where we can. Does anyone have anything to add to the discussion? Okay, thank you, everyone. I know that was painful to get through. Um.
Did, did we vote?
Oh, well, we voted, did we, oh, did we roll call? Roll call.
Plu- aye.
It's too long.
Plu- aye.
Can do that.
Carboni aye.
Do it.
Yeah, when it goes on over forty minutes, I'll just track. Article nine? Article nine, Article nine, agenda item nine, damn it, article. Uh, revisit EDC charge regarding membership. Um, this is where we added on the planning board member or town planner and finance committee member, moving the membership up from five to seven, um, and then two alternates. Are the alternates listed in here, Andrew?
Yeah, it just says two associate members.
There it is, okay. Um, so this was requested by both, uh, the planning board and by the finance committee to quite literally have a seat at the table, um, for the EDC. Is there any other context that you would like to add in, Andrew?
Yeah, um, Select Board member Brian Day, um, awarded me to something in the bylaw for the finance committee. It was out what committees they can be a part of. This isn't in there. So we'd have to change the bylaw to say that.
That's no good. So, um.
You know, a question, right, the finance committee's primary purpose is to ensure the financial operation of the town, is that really a role of EDC? How does that, what's, how's that tie in?
Maybe if we're talking about taxes, or, you know, formatting some type of new initiative where, um, like a meals tax or, or one of those things, what impact is that gonna have on business in town? That's where I could see that, um, and then the planning board, I can't really say a planning board member per se, but I could see a planner, obviously be the, the right fit
Mm-hmm.
for that role, um, and in lieu of not having a planner, then obviously, you know, a planning board member could, um.
Some delegate of theirs.
Yeah, would be part of that decision. So, with, in light of new information, um, would we like to change the charge on the fly, remove? So, with, in light of new information, um, would we like to change the charge on the fly, remove finance and remove another member to make it an odd number?
Well, considering we have three at large, we could, you know, only move four, I mean, four.
We had four at large.
We had four, but only three submitted.
Yes, letters of interest, so we don't have.
There's been a rescind since we were sitting here, so we have two, I think we're down to.
Are they looking at us, watching us now? They don't want to be part of it?
They're in the room earlier.
Do we, how, what did we get? How do we know that?
I, when I was looking at, uh, the E code, I saw an email come in from that person rescinding their nomination, their interest.
Oh.
Oh.
That's upsetting. Um, all right, so. The committee charge would be comprised of five members, including one select board member, one planning board member or town planner. We would strike out one finance committee member, um, and we would put, strike out four at-large members and put three at-large members. We would remain stagnant with the two associate members with preference given to individuals with professional expertise.
Don't know an alternate idea, I'm not saying it's good. Um, I mean, so the finance committee member would like somebody from the Board of Assessors or like ZBA?
I had set master plan would probably be a good one, too.
Fight over that one, there's so many of them.
Yeah.
Um, I know it would work, too.
Yeah, but, um, I, I would have no objections to any of them, but no one has expressed interest, and that's my only concern.
Yeah.
Um, but there's no reason they couldn't apply for an at-large.
I did speak with someone last week that is interested, he just didn't put his letter in yet.
We have an elected person in an at-large membership seat. Assessors is elected, ZBA is not.
Tell me, tell me about that rule. I think, I thought you just can't have them in a related.
I don't know, I'm asking a question. Because like, when we were doing the TA search committee, um, one of the finance committee members wanted to be on, but waited until their term had ended and then submitted to be an at-large member. I don't know.
I don't know that there's any, the finance committee is the only one that gets kind of a slapdown, um, as far as being able to attend other things, and that rule has, um, it's not in other towns, just to let everyone know. That's something that came up specifically, uh, in this town as kind of a.
It's gotta be a story.
Yeah, it's kind of a story. I think Lorene remembers the story, but it was a specific situation that, um, they had a very big solve for by having a town meeting article about it, just like on last year or the year before, when we had one come up. Um, it was specifically directed. Um, we should probably, as a matter of course, not have the finance committee constrained in that way. I just don't know the benefit of not having people that want to volunteer for the town volunteer to be, you know, what, does it matter if you're on conservation and finance? Probably not. Like, that's probably not a thing, but that's just me.
Madam Chair, I would agree. I, I, coming from the finance committee, I'm well aware of what involvement we can and can't do, and I'm aware that other communities do not have that.
Yeah, no, no, it was, it was, it was, it happened in the nineties? Happened in the nineties sometime, I think, um, and it doesn't exist anywhere else. I looked it.
That's weird.
Yeah.
So, maybe at a later date, we could discuss amending the bylaw?
I think that's a great thing to, I don't think it would even take a later date. Could we just add it on at this juncture? If, uh, if the board has a taste for it, I mean, it's, it's just rescinding a bylaw.
It, it is. I mean, I'm looking at like what they are allowed to be on, so they can be on capital expenditure committee, financial matters, building committees, financial matters, employee search committees, energy committees, that's a weird one to have on there, wage and personnel board, or any subcommittee of the regional school committees. Uh, that's what they're allowed to be on.
Can't be on parks.
Nope.
Can't, can't be on conservation again.
Nope.
I mean, I can see why, I mean, conservation has a conservation agent that's paid money by the town. I mean, the argument is that they're supposed to be a neutral party to financial matters.
Is it a similar statement to how like the accountant, accountant does the books but has no look at the accounts themselves, as treasurer does?
Yeah, a little bit. I mean, I think they should be on this, but.
Could we, Madam Chair, could we somehow maybe? There's no appetite for completely eliminating it, would it, would the restriction be, can't be a member of another committee that has a budget line item? But other committees. Well, I, I was limited, I couldn't be a part of the IT committee.
Yeah, oh, I know, frustrating.
We have a member, you know, and who wants to be a member of the EDC, these don't have any budget items, they're more advisory committees, so could we maybe loosen it a little bit? And say, subcommittees, advisory committees with no budget. I think.
But we're not limiting select board members who have ultimate control over the budget. We're not limiting them, so what is the, if your argument is that they have control over the budget, they have no more or less control, but actually less control.
I would argue less.
Yeah, less control than the select board, so select board, if so, factor, should not be part of any other committee.
Right.
I don't know the history of why this is even here.
We need to, I, I don't, I can't.
Shoot the messenger.
I don't remember.
I mean, I would maybe just say, perhaps Erica, Mike, and Andrew get together, look at this and say, is there a thoughtful way to modify this?
I think what they've done is they've added these random committees.
We don't want so-and-so on that, put that in there.
Yeah.
It's like you can't be on.
If you want to look at it, Andrew, and have it ready before the next time we get together and meet, because nothing, no article is as easy as the ones that you just say, rescind this article, so it's not super labor intensive. I know KP Law will charge us a couple hours for it, but, you know.
Someone will stand up and say, nineteen sixty-three.
Yes, we had this one person. All right, so, but at this time, we can only vote on the article in front of us, so the change to the document, and anyone can correct me if I'm saying it wrong, is the committee will be comprised of five members, including one select board member, one planning board member or town planner, and three at-large members and two associate members.
I would suggest a tweak to that.
I'm all ears.
Like, I would, I, I think the town planner should have priority over the planning board member, so somehow to say like town planner or, you know, in absence.
Okay, so town planner or designee?
Planning board designee in, in, in absence of a town planner or something.
Does everyone have a thought on the town planner or planning board designee and switching the, the order of operations on it?
I can agree.
Okay.
One, two, three, four.
So now it's seven instead of.
Okay, because I think you read off five, but seven was your intent?
Oh, I read off five members and two alternates.
Okay, that's okay.
Yeah, 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 so seven total, but five members.
Gotcha.
Two alternates.
Thank you.
I don't even remember where those associate members came from.
I don't know either. They were just there. Do we need them? Do we? Do we want to make it smaller, like?
I mean, if they're non-voting, then, I mean, anybody can come to a meeting, unless the idea is that they get, you know, they work up their skills and work up to a full member later, a full at-large member.
I think it worked really good for the ZBA in the past. Was it the ZBA that had that?
ZBA and conservation.
Conservation, yeah. But again, it's, I mean, this is more of, I don't want to see an advisory group because it's not like action being.
Well, last time, um, they put out lots of surveys, um, and, um, they were coming up with plans to what to add to the website.
No, right.
I mean, that's action.
I meant significant changes in, you know, like zoning changes or.
Oh, yeah.
Like, nothing like that.
No.
But. Any comments?
Could we just read off the, the, the intended membership one more time? I'm sorry.
Sure. The committee will be comprised of five members, including one select board member, town planner or designee, and three at-large members and two associate members.
Okay, so that's gone, that's done, three, okay, thank you.
Sure.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Do we have the option of updating the charge later, should a bylaw be update, uh, rescinded?
Yeah.
We can do this anytime.
We can do it, we can, we can do this every week?
I'm not advocating that, thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Um, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Let's get it rolling.
Roll call vote.
Hon, aye.
Pluca, aye.
Kinda.
Carboni, aye.
Do aye.
Madam Chair, that's your.
I know, I know. I'll get with the envelope and get something scheduled. All right. Uh. Agenda item number ten. I think we lost all of our audience members.
Wow, we didn't get halfway.
Yeah, we were, we were almost there. This will all go a lot quicker, hopefully. Um, discuss impossible vote to appoint Noel, Chris, Noel.
How do you say your last name? I've said it wrong four times.
What is it?
Relu.
Relu. Kristen Howard and Lori Driscoll to the Economic Development Committee. Mr. Day, you had additional information of one of the members not?
Yes, so at six forty-eight this evening, Noel has rescinded her interest in the EDC.
Got it. So, please strike Noel from us, and now it is just Kristen Howard and Lori Driscoll. Has everyone read the notes and attached resumes?
Yep.
Um, and does anyone have any thoughts or comments? And I am making an amendment when I read it that it's three at-large members instead of four now, so just to update the group. Um, so we have two people who've expressed interest for three seats.
I'll make a motion to appoint Kristen Howard and Lori Driscoll to serve as, um, two of the three at-large members on the Economic Development Committee with terms to expire July thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Very excited. Um, this is, both of these people have amazing, um, records and resumes, and this will make a big difference having such qualified membership on this board. Uh, roll call vote.
Hon, aye.
Pluca, aye.
Kinda.
Carboni, aye.
Do aye.
Excellent, excellent. Uh, eleven. Town clerk's memo regarding the results of the annual town erection, write-in position for finance. Um, as many of you know, um, we just recently had an election. Uh, we had, uh, one of our own, uh, members on the select board had, uh, a robust showing of, uh, of write-ins for finance committee, which we have discussed, he cannot do both. Um, and, uh, because that's invalidated, um, we have to have another person for that position. Did I miss something on this? Do we have?
Hmm?
Did someone else? Was there a second?
Uh, Larry Constant won one seat and Chris won the other one.
Yeah, and then was there any, now, correct me, like, I thought with the write-ins, if one couldn't fill it, it would go to the next one.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So I had a discussion with, with, uh, town clerk.
Thank you.
And because we do not have ranked choice voting, that, that does not apply, so it's a top vote.
Got it, got it, because I know there was like four other write-ins. All right, so that makes sense. So, this isn't so much a vote as it is just a discussion, or is there is no vote on here to take, right, Tracy?
No, um, she just wanted the select board to, um, just know what had happened and to ask for letters of interest for the vacancy.
Well, please follow Tracy's direction and send in some letters of interest if you are interested in being a member of our fantastic finance committee. And that's it for that. Moving on, Madam Chair.
Do you want to give a date? Or you want to leave it open?
A date, oh, a date to, um, to send it in, um.
Thirty days?
I think thirty days would be great, so today is the fourteenth, so by thirty days, how, September, what, what is it, wait, what's the date, uh, thirty days from now?
Make it easy, May fourteenth.
May fourteenth. Thank you very much, Tracy.
Like a job posting or until filled.
Yeah. Um, item, let's see, agenda item number twelve, discuss impossible vote of notice of intent to lay out a portion of Harrison Ave as public roadway. Um, we also have an additional, um, supplemental document as well.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
We discussing?
We are discussing.
So, um, a little bit familiar with this process. Basically, it is a private road that they are applying to now become a town-owned road, correct?
Typically, yes, but this, this has always been a public road, but since they're doing the Route seventy-nine project, they're kind of finding like just different things are recorded, kind of funky, from like decades ago, so they're kind of like correcting what, what the plan is.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
More of a cleanup.
Yes.
In other words.
Exactly.
So, no impact to what the town, the highway department does or anything like that?
Nope.
Um, do you want to speak to this?
Just really what I kind of just said, they're doing the Route seventy-nine, uh, easement process right now, um, and they're kind of finding, when they're pulling old records, that things are kind of listed funky and the road doesn't look exactly how it actually is on these old documents.
Welcome to Lakeville.
Well, it's like that really anywhere, just roads change, you know, so, um.
Rock walls fall and then your markers are gone?
Front lawns pop up, they go away, um, so, they're just, it's just confirming that it's a right, it's a public way and just really establishing existing conditions.
So. Discussion for more of it, Brian?
I was just gonna make a motion on this giant.
By all means, make the massive motion.
I move with the select board vote, its intention to lay out a portion of Harrison Avenue as a public way, the location is shown on a plan entitled layout plan of land for Harrison Avenue, two hundred and twenty-two feet from Rhode Island Road, town of Lakeville, Massachusetts, dated February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, prepared by Delwood and to forward this vote and the plan to the planning board with direction to provide a report on such layout to the select board as soon as possible pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one, aye.
A second for discussion? Please discuss.
Um, typically, the process of, um, you know, accepting a, a road, there has to be letters submitted by, um, you know, our DPW, and that's typically comes at this time, isn't that correct, Tracy? Um, Madam Chair, um, yes, there are two people that, um, I have to send the notice of the intent to lay out, um, at per town council, um, there's only two that are affected.
Okay.
So, um, after you vote, I will put those out in the mail to them.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? None heard. Roll call vote.
Hon, aye.
Pluca, aye.
Kinda.
Carboni, aye.
Do aye. Quick question, Madam Chair, to the, through you, um, do we anticipate more of these popping up now and then, or are they done with?
That's, that's the only.
This is the first one I've heard.
That's the only one, yeah.
And this one's going to town meeting, too.
Correct.
Right, moving right along, agenda item number thirteen, discuss impossible vote on comments, um, request from planning, comments on request from planning board to review Mystic Estates subdivision plan. Um, attached is definitive residential subdivision for two house lots located at ninety-two Howland Road and a letter from the engineer with a list of land waivers. Does anyone wish to speak to this?
Madam Chair, procedural wise, it's just, so, again, still fairly new. We have the first. We have the first and then say on this and then goes to Planning Board, correct?
Uh, Planning Board asked for comments prior from different boards and committees.
So how has this been handled in the past? I guess is what I'm asking.
They send out, um, to various boards at the same time. It's just one big thing for comments for all the boards. In case there's something on there that looks odd, it's something, um, we don't particularly have, um, sway over this. But if we have comments, they put it as part of their record.
Okay, ultimately, it's Planning Board.
Yep.
Yeah, so like, things that would fall under our purview would be more like curb cuts, water allocation, if they have to come to us for water.
Earth removal.
Earth removal, even though we don't charge for it.
Call your favorites.
Yeah, all the great ones.
But we, um, we do have a bylaw that does indicate which depart, you know, which, who receives the plans, so, um...
Select board's one of them.
Yeah.
Great, okay, thank you.
As usual, the plans are minuscule and very hard to read when it's in this format. So, um, I don't have the big magnifying glass, but I looked through things online. I didn't see anything standing out, but I absolutely could have missed tons.
Hey, Madam Chair, Mike, Mike, I did not notice these before, so I'm glad you mentioned them. I didn't notice the significant list of waivers being required, or requested at least. I don't know if planning has granted them or not, but it's a significant list there. I would hope that many of these are not followed. I'd also maybe ask if fire has looked at any of these requested waivers, given turning radius of apparatuses often a concern?
So I know fire always gets these, and I haven't seen a comment from fire.
Okay.
Um, and police usually gets them for a new.
Yeah, right, and they probably just send them straight to the planning board anyway.
Okay.
But I think that's a good comment to make sure we're mindful of how many waivers, um, that we have on there because the list does seem extensive, um, especially like the sidewalk waiver, um...
It's just a strange one because it's only two houses in a subdivision.
Yeah.
So a lot of those waivers are like meant for like...
Big subdivisions. Can you, you can have a two-house subdivision.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it just has to be more than one for all of you at home.
If a subdivision in town is basically a road and one big parcel.
Yeah, but that's not supposed to be. That's, that's not how it's supposed to work. Supposed to have at least two buildable lots, uh, to be considered a subdivision, if I'm correct, as opposed to a private way.
Mm-hmm. I'd, the only, um, comments I would have that I would like, would submit is just, um, the line of sight. It looks like, you know, it's right next to the, to the school. All, all of our roads are windy, not always throw my two cents in there. I just want to make sure that the line of sight, so I don't know exactly where this is, you know, on that curve, but just as long as, you know, people can be, they can see exiting left and right and people can see them coming out left and right.
We have not always done the best in this town for visibility and sightlines, um, for older roads.
Madam Chair, is that a Planning Board responsibility to ensure those line of sight requirements or?
Do they, do they have that as a requirement for line of sight? When they're...
I do not know myself. It might come up with like, some of the roads in town are state roads, so Mast Dot can weigh in on some of these things on the state roads.
Yep.
I don't know about our public areas.
DPW Director might weigh in if, um, if it was laid out in such a way that was of concern. Um, but is he specifically given these as well?
He's our delegate for curb cuts?
Yeah.
So he should be approving the curb cut itself.
So at least there's someone looking out for those type of things. But again, these tiny drawings and the way that it's laid out.
That was always a dirt driveway, a single-family driveway that went right up next to the school property and you couldn't see the house. You didn't even know there was a house back there.
Oh, wow.
Got it, well now it'll be a much bigger driveway. But it makes sense why they wouldn't be looking for sidewalks for a two-house.
Which makes sense, but then to come back to like the master plan, they're always saying we need more and more side, yeah, walkable community.
Communities, so, yep. So can I get a list of comments from anyone? Um, anything anyone would like to mention? Nada, okay?
Just what's already been said from me, I guess.
All right. That is all. No vote for that. Um, fourteen. Moving on to agenda item fourteen. Discuss impossible vote on request from Red Hand Brewing Company for dancing on weekdays, um, permit and public entertainment on Sunday license for three forty-eight Bedford Street. Red Hand Brewing has applied for dancing on weekdays permit, um, and public entertainment on Sundays license for three forty-eight Bedford Street. Think that's pretty self-explanatory. Red Hand Brewing's been open for five months, maybe, fish? Less than a year, I'll say.
Yeah.
Less than a year. Um, has there been anything that we got for notice for the fire chief or the police chief or the building inspector for any problems or anything that we would be concerned about?
Madam Chair, I did check with the police chief and he has nothing.
Perfect, thank you, Tracy.
So, Madam Chair, the, do we know dancing on weekdays?
What kind of dancing?
Indoor or outdoor?
I don't think you'd need a permit for outdoor dancing. I think you'd only need a permit for indoor dancing.
This is one of those weird, weird, old, tiny licenses where Tracy can probably tell us what it really means. It probably just means like we can play music or something silly.
Mm-hmm, Madam Chair, correct. Um, Member Day is correct. It basically gives them the ability, um, to have a band, to have a person play music inside and, and if someone breaks out and dance, they're covered. But it's basically more of an entertainment, but we don't have a, an entertainment license. A lot of communities do, we don't, so the dancing on weekdays covers that.
Shouldn't we just have an entertainment license to cover these type of things?
Well, the public entertainment is a state license.
Got it.
For Sundays.
But they don't have a Saturday one?
No, they do not.
Cause you just assume you dance on Saturdays. It's very off-putting to dance on Sundays.
So, public entertainment, if they want to conduct that on a Sunday, they require a license?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to issue dancing on weekdays permit and a public entertainment on Sundays license for Red Hand Brewing located at three forty-eight Bedford Street to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. And they'll just come back again and just reapply with the regular.
Yep, okay.
Second with quick question, um, did they need to add anything for Saturday or is Saturday a free game in the Commonwealth?
Saturday is a weekday.
Yeah.
Saturday is a weekday.
According to the dancing on weekdays.
Okay, what's wrong with us?
It's very old, it's very, very old and antiquated.
Right, exactly.
What's wrong with us, for real?
Sorry, had to ask. Now I'm correct.
We're all gonna be replaced by AI. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Hump eye.
Plunk eye.
Candido eye, dance on. Carbonee eye.
Day eye.
Uh, article number fifteen. Discuss impossible vote on a stipend for Planning Clerk Kathy Murray. Attaches a memo from the town administrator and HR director regarding a stipend request for the Planning Clerk Kathy Murray. Uh, question for the town administrator, was the union consulted with this change?
No, no, it's, uh, part of the union contract that, um, anything, a period of ten, over ten days consecutive, they could, would have to be paid at a higher rate, so...
All right, so this higher rate in here is, if I'm, if I got the math right, was it thirty-five percent higher than her normal rate? That seems not in line with what has been done in the past. I believe it's been a five or ten percent increase for covering, especially if it's not someone that has direct supervisory role, um, where they're not supervising other people, um, or there's like a, um, a certificate or skills, um, involved that is additional to.
Chair, I think we set a precedent when we were in the process of hiring the HR director.
But it was like five thousand dollars, right?
But that person, that assistant is also, um, I believe a confidential employee, so they're not uni, non-union. So we had to come in like do something because there was nothing here, but I agree, a thirty-five percent sounds...
What did we do last time?
So that...
Not that I'm saying we should always go by precedent, I just want to like understand.
So those, those prior times request and then, uh, Kathy, that's what, those amounts come out to the same that we're doing now. It's really the two salaries per hour combined divided by two. That's my understanding, it's, um...
I thought it was like five thousand dollars. It was, I know, um, for HR it was forty-five hundred.
Is that what was in the end?
And then it would be less than that based on dollar per hour. I, myself, am not understanding that that jumped the map. The math isn't mathing for me, um, on that. I would love to hear other members' thoughts on the matter.
My question would be when contracts, I don't quite understand all the time with the legalese, uh, for says shall be paid at a rate in the higher compensation grade level. Is that the grade that the higher, you know, in this case, the planner would have been, whatever letter the planner grade is here?
So, my understanding is it would be in the union grid would, would be the next step. And, um, we leveled those at some point to be three percent in between the steps. But I wouldn't be opposed of going like above that if we needed to, you know, for, for specific circumstances. But I'm not seeing where the job is significantly changing either from some of the tasks and duties of the everyday. Again, there's no, there's no employees, um, under this person, um, there's no supervisory role. It's more of a communication and doing most of the tasks that they're already doing. So, I don't know, I, again, I talk too much, I want everyone else's thoughts on it.
I mean, it says required, right? So like, and this is nothing against any individual finds them in this position and just trying to understand how this works. So like, you know, given the lack of a planner, the town administrator would be the supervising person. Should it be a directive from them to say, look, with this person out, I need you to do these three things, just these three things? Or everything? Um, and then like if it's, you know, just these three things, does that really translate to the calculation we're seeing here? As opposed to, you know?
I, I think this is an overreach for, um, you know, the increased responsibilities of the role. Um, but at the same time, we absolutely want to compensate people for taking on more stuff. It, it, it's, it's a good precedent, it's good for people, um, but these numbers just aren't...
Madam Chair, so, again, so I know you folks have been dealing with these more. My, my understanding is that if I look at the, the union requirements, if a person was filling in for that other person and doing that exact role, I think that's kind of what my understanding, that's, that's the unions, you gotta, this is how you compensate them.
Yeah.
This, not, not the case here where she is this, now she's not doing the role of town planner.
Taking extra responsibilities, but not the role.
Right, so that's the general understanding, okay, thank you.
Mr. Hunt, any thoughts?
No.
Stay on that one. Smart man.
So, Madam Chair, do we have the legal authority to reduce that amount?
The, we're the only ones that can approve the amount. So we can approve whichever amount that we say as long as there is an amount that's in the spirit of what the contract says. And for me, the spirit of the contract says there should be an increase.
Agree.
Um, you know, for increased responsibilities, which I, I, I do agree that we should move on. However, it does not say it needs the compensation of someone doing things that you're not doing because that person's not there in that role. Which...
Agree.
I believe a lot of things are falling, and Andrew, you can correct me, but to you and to Nate, um, that would have been something in that role too. Um, and it's not just predominantly on the shoulders of this one, uh, you know, clerk, that there's things that you guys are covering because of that. So therefore, it, it shows plainly that this position, even though it is elevated and, and is, uh, more broad in its reach, is not encompassing everything that the planner role would have done.
Yeah, um, certainly agree with that. My, the only thing I would, I guess, counter with is this arrangement was done like less than a year ago. Similar, similar pay, similar everything.
Are we sure on the, the, the pay?
Yeah, I, I mean, I double-checked a couple of times. I mean, I can't guarantee how many, what the hours were. My understanding is the number of hours that she did at this rate equaled up to like thirty-six hundred. It was between January eighth and March fifth of twenty-four.
Thirty-five percent, it's just, it's, it's just high. So what does that equal out to in like equivalent dollars? So...
If it was, I just did that thirty-four oh three at thirty-seven and a half hours a week is about sixty-six thousand total, if that was the, you know, yearly.
Oh, I came up to about seventy. Dueling math, come on.
Well, I, I did thirty-seven and a half hours, I don't know if that's correct or not, I forgot.
I did forty.
Yeah, that's probably all it was.
Got it, got it. And is it a forty? Or thirty-seven point five?
Should be forty.
Forty, okay.
So we're going from a fifty-one thousand to a seventy thousand dollar role. So just to keep it in perspective.
Should we table it and have them come back with a new proposed? I mean, I, I don't think we know a debate a number here tonight, right?
Yeah, but if we wanted to, we could set a number, but I'm okay with, uh, coming back. Is there anything statutorily that says we have to do it within X amount of days of the role? Or, you know, we would make it, obviously, whatever we would make, we would make it, um, you know? Rest, thank you, was not coming to me.
I don't think there's like a specific timeline on it, I would just, I guess, need some guidance on what the, what the hourly rate would be.
But my concern is that, uh, if there's forty hours of current work that's already being addressed, out of that forty, what is going to be addressed, addressing anything above and beyond or outside the scope of that?
And what has to be dropped to do it?
That's a good point.
So if it's, you know where I'm going with this?
Yes, so I think, i- is she gonna take something back that has already been dispersed to somebody else?
Yeah, but, or if it's forty hours at one rate, that, the current rate, but then there's additional responsibilities, are those additional responsibilities equivalent to forty hours?
I don't think I understand.
I don't think that's, I think I'd, I don't think that's physically possible, unless you're working more than forty hours.
If they're, if they're working forty hours at one rate for, you know, these responsibilities, how many hours of the additional responsibilities at that higher rate?
So if your calendar is full at forty hours and now we've added some more stuff to your plea, are we talking about?
So we're gonna, now we're gonna pay the forty hours at a higher rate that was already being paid.
As opposed to just the additional tasks that are being taken on? It's all tasks are being paid at a higher rate?
Right, so maybe...
Gotcha, took me a minute, Lori.
And I'm not wording it, I did eat a little something before, but, so I didn't lose all my train of thought, but, I mean, I want to be fair and equitable.
Yep.
And I think that, you know, from what I'm hearing, consensus is the same, but what is that?
And precedent has been using this formula? That's, that's precedent.
Can we get like another verification on that? Because I remember watching that meeting and I really thought it was like a lot less than this amount, or maybe just the way it was phrased made it seem less than... than this amount, or maybe just the way it was phrased made it seem less than thirty-five percent increase in salary.
Yeah, I can check. I mean, Lacey's texted me now saying it's, it was a correct amount, so I don't.
Oh, okay.
I don't know who else I would check with.
The outstanding question that might hit is like, I mean, what says this one? A rate at the higher compensation grade, is that like the next, you know, say they got a raise and it's the next level? Or is it the level of, in this case, the planner's level, which, you know, we have some letter assigned to it. I don't know what letter that is. Cause I'm assuming this was done by, yeah, planner minus divided by two, okay. So it's not at the full planner rate, it is a portion of that delta between them.
So, I mean, uh, obviously this board can't be tied to our previous board's actions. So just because a precedent was set a year or two ago.
The problem is precedent, and just like I said before, anything that we do now that's less than that is taken away, which is, and obviously going to be perceived as a negative. However, I, I would not like this board to think of continuously if we make a mistake not doing the same thing. If this indeed was a mistake and this wasn't the intent, it just mathed out in a way that wasn't fully explained or expected.
This, this, I mean, this formula was set by two TAs ago. I don't, I think it was just kind of like you just added two together and divided by two and you don't have to do that.
I think it was set to what Brian was saying and not to the department head. And if it was department head, they weren't actually acting as the department head. Because I think that is a big difference, um.
Was she the department head last time?
No.
Oh, I don't know. That's, that, that's how we did it last time.
Um, Madam Chair, again to remember Dave's point, I, I agree that the wording paid at a rate in the higher compensation grade level that is equivalent to his, her same current compensation. So is that the new, the, the role they're assuming? Or are you, are they remembering, is that a reference to that person? Uh, can we get clarification on that?
Say it one more time.
So if you look at the third line, or it's on the second line, they will, they're have to be paid at a rate in the higher compensated, compensation grade level that is equivalent to his, her same current compensation step level effective. I'm not, I'm not sure if it's clear.
It's really bad, um, as far as, as wording goes, but, um, again, your, your point is well taken.
Right, is it?
Like, it's a step level effective first day of assignment. That doesn't speak to a department head, that doesn't speak to taking on partial responsibility for the role. Like, we haven't done ourselves any favors here by not, you know, what, what do you say? Clarity is kindness and being super clear on, on what that statute like attaches to. So I, I think I remember when this happened and it happened when, um, all of this ended up happening when the fire chief previous to the current had left and the deputy, the deputy lieutenant moved in and there was no compensation at that time, um, additional. And I remember there being, you know, a, a way to address it at that time. But for that particular instance, the deputy was doing all of the job of the chief. There was no, there was no part that wasn't being.
Right.
Done, undone or done by other people. It was a full ass- assuming of the duties.
You know, in just reading this as well, it says here, an employee required to perform. Are we requiring the clerical?
Yeah, I mean, I, then there's no other, there's no like backstop really on a lot of this additional duties that she outlines. Like, I'm not gonna be reviewing plans and material for the planning and zoning board. Like, that's, that'd be what she would do. So, um, that's why I had her, had her doing this stuff. Because otherwise the office is not gonna really run really at all.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I think we're spinning our wheels at the moment.
I think the recommendation, my recommendation would be to table upon additional clarification of this and another proposed. Compensation level.
To reject this compensation level and, and ask for another one?
Um, can we table it? No, no, we probably should reject.
We could, we wouldn't be giving direction if we just tabled it. If we wanna, we wanna give direction to say come up with another number, it would have to be rejected and request for.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with tabling too. If this comes back with just like more clarity, because the next time we have to do this, I wanna be able to go back and say, alright, now we all felt good about how we came up to whatever the answer is. And not be doing this again.
These additional duties list, I, I, did I hear you say this was presented to you by the clerical position? Or did you get this from the job description?
I got this from Kathy.
And Kathy's going on site visits?
Yeah. I mean, I don't know if that's necessarily happened yet, but that's something that will be, I mean, as needed, yeah.
I'd want, I'd want very specific, um, idea of what additional duties are. They're ve- very specific, as needed.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's not necessarily gonna be like scheduled site visits in advance. I mean, it could come up next week that she needs to go on one. That's not gonna be something that is gonna be known ahead of time.
Why would, why, but what I'm getting at is what would the person be doing on a site visit? I mean, I understand a, a planner going to a site visit, but a planner has training, planner has education and probably degree on some of this stuff. And it, this is no reflection upon, you know, the, the current person in there. I'm just saying that the, the responsibilities are that of a planner.
So pick up a little of what you were saying. A lot of the additional duties seem like they are part of the job description of the clerk. Like the repair, the preparing reports, um, coordinating staff, um, review of materials.
Some of these too, Madam Chair, this might be not the greatest way of thinking, but good example, or at least an example with the Board of Assessors recently, where we were in a position where we didn't know if we'd have a principal assessor for pavement season. Some of those duties fall back to the board, not the employees, right? So the assessors, clerical staff, and the assessors part-time, uh, oh geez, Norm's title, I forget it right now. Um, you know, let's call him field visit guy.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, Norm. Um, you know, they weren't the ones taking on the roles of the principal assessor. Those would have fallen back to the Board of Assessors.
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't know if that's a legal thing or just the way it should work, but it feels like a similar situation.
I'm circling like, um, you know, the tasks already assigned to clerk for them, uh, maintain an update running ledger for escrow accounts, um, maintain records and reports and documents, prepare and schedule for hearings. Like, a lot of these things seem very similar to tasks that are already in here.
Right.
Um, but again, not taking away anything from this person who's pivotal and doing a, a good job. It's just the amount, the percentage is a problem for me.
And before, we had the planner, we had a planning board, and we had this position.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And somebody was doing say.
Somebody was doing it, so I don't know if it was out of the select boards off, I'm not sure. But I, and again, I, I wanna be able to support the additional, um, you know, increase for, you know, the time of the stipend. But I ca- I cannot bring myself to do it for thirty-five percent. So if we're gonna vote on that, it's, that would be a no for me. I just need to make sure that it's fair and equitable percentage.
Um, does anybody want to nominate themselves as being a point person to work with, um, maybe Andrew and Lacey to just dive into this a little more?
I nominate Brian.
I don't know if the cycle's for it. Sorry, otherwise I would have said so.
I nominate Lorraine Carbone.
Hi. Did you see the list that I'm on?
Yeah, I will happily help out and coordinate. Again, this isn't a popular thing to have a conversation about, um, but it, it is, um, not just for this role, but this is gonna help us formulate how we're going to attack this in the future and be more clear. Develop a policy maybe even, like, you know, to give guidance to future select boards who are sitting here wondering why something happened the way it happened. Um, so I would take a, uh, who would like to table this?
Uh, make a motion to table this. Do we have to give a date on table? I forget.
Twenty-eighth, twenty-eighth.
Table's the twenty-eighth, and that Chair Candido will work with town staff to come back with further clarity.
Hold on. Moves, motion in second. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Hunt, aye.
Plunk, aye.
Candido, aye. Carbone, aye.
Day, aye.
Madam Chair, who needs a motion?
Brian.
And who seconded?
Lorraine.
Thank you.
This must be under an hour.
Seventeen. Um, discuss a possible vote, reappointment of David Freitz as animal control officer and Lisa Podolski. Um, Darcy Lee and Ronnie Freitz as assistant animal control officers. Um, anyone have any comments, questions?
No.
No, is there a date?
Fantastic. Uh, who would like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to reappoint Dave Freitz as animal control officer, constable, Lisa Podolski, Darcy Lee, Ronnie Freitz as assistant control, animal control officers, all terms to expire April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six.
Second.
I have a motion in second. Any conversation, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Hunt, aye.
Plunk, aye.
Candido, aye.
Carbone, aye.
Day, aye.
Item number eighteen, discuss a possible vote on reappointment of Christine Boone as Veterans Agent Graves Officer.
I'll make a motion to appoint Christine Boons as Veterans Agent Graves Officer with a term expiring April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six.
Second.
I have a motion to second. Any conversation? No discussion being heard. Roll call vote.
Hunt, aye.
Plunk, aye.
Candido, aye.
Carbone, aye.
Day, aye.
Agenda item nineteen. Scheduling select board meeting dates for May and June. May, May fifth and May nineteenth, June, June second and twenty-third, with town meeting being on June ninth. We've got your June locked up, everybody.
Madam Chair, this is where I'll throw out what I asked you the other day, if anybody would entertain a date other than Mondays.
Hmm, so, um, question for the group, and we don't need an answer now, but everyone should think about it in the future. Um, and I, I think it's a policy.
No.
It's not in one of the policies?
All I've seen is that we will meet roughly twice a month, more or less, depending on business, although that might not even.
So, um, it's tradition, uh, uh, that we meet on Mondays. However, there was, there was time where, I know it was like Tuesdays for a while and Thursdays for a while.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any appetite for this board and not, this is not a question for now, this is a question for next meeting? Um, and I want you all to think about if we want to move the date. And remember, Dave, did you wanna give some of your reasons for moving the date besides just Monday being the worst day ever?
Monday's the worst day ever, and I mean, I personally find getting the packet Thursday night, Friday morning, and then having essentially zero time where the office closes early on Fridays to talk to anybody without ruining their weekend, and then trying to rush through a day job and get through our packet over the weekend, to then come here in the evening can sometimes lead to being not as educated as you like to be. Um, that's probably the, the biggest reason there. Um, so I'd love to shift it to somewhere else in the week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, depending on where everybody's available for. Um, this is, and it also helps us avoid Monday holidays. Cause sometimes we're like, oh, we'll meet every third week to avoid this holiday. There's probably a plethora of other reasons I'm forgetting right now, but you had mentioned sometimes things come off over the weekend.
Yeah, yeah. And just like you said, you have no one to talk to about it or, you know, no way to get information. Um, a, a possible problem is obviously space and rooms. Um, and unpopular opinion here, um, I, I don't know of any other town where the select board has to fight for space. They usually have their own meeting room or they, they're, they're usually, uh, you know, kind of given their own spot and other boards kind of satellite around. So that's always been something that's an interesting dynamic that's happened. If we chose, say, a Wednesday or a Thursday, that would mean other boards and committees have to shuffle around too. And we wanna be cognizant on what that looks like and, you know, try to be as least impactful as possible on any changes that we may or may not make. That being said, not a discussion specifically for today. Um, but if there are dates on here that are not, uh, not Mondays and we wanna discuss floor meetings, we can do that at this juncture.
I'm just randomly like, uh, like honestly, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, any of those, probably Tuesday, Wednesday are easier for me. Um, if we're taking a poll, I'm just kinda looking through the calendar of the past couple of months and when Wednesday appears to be lighter meeting-wise.
So, Madam Chair, may my preference, uh, would be to not do Wednesdays because those are always school committee and regional FinCom. Uh, so that would impact my availability.
Got it.
Uh, but if you were chair of regional FinCom, then you could set the date.
That's true, that's true. But I, I do attend a lot of school committee meetings too, especially during budget season.
And, you know, the appointed liaisons as well.
And, and then my Thursdays, because I do Lions three, three meetings a month on Thursdays, so. But Tuesdays, I would, my preference would be Monday or Tuesday.
And Tuesday, we would have to have the agenda in by Friday, right? Forty-eight hours.
Yeah.
Yeah. I would keep that scheduled the same.
Well, right now I post on Thursdays.
Right. And I don't think that's a problem. Getting the, the posting on a Thursday, like if that stuff stayed the same.
Yeah, cause then you'd have more time.
An extra date on Monday. I wouldn't change anything other than that. Tuesdays would work for me. Wednesdays would be tough.
I'll make any day work.
Look at that first year being all agreeables.
That'll change soon, don't worry.
Um, it's not particularly on the agenda, but for these dates, did we want to do May sixth and May twentieth? And Tracy, do we have a room that we could meet in on the sixth and the twentieth to try out the old?
I have to check with Kristen. This room's pretty booked. I mean, that's why we were meeting at the library for those off-night budget meetings.
Nobody's posted for May yet. Yeah, I don't see why we'd have to fight for a room.
I don't get that.
Well, nothing's posted for May, but Kristen has her internal schedule.
I mean, COA is like two meeting rooms at one, and they do have some night stuff, but. And maybe when the bathroom's done, the old town hall becomes an option.
That's right. I don't, I don't disagree, but that would be a really actually nice and historic place.
Be something cool.
To me, um, and I know the heating and cooling in there is sufficient as well. We're not gonna sweat or freeze.
Or the pavilion.
I, personally, I would like you to do it after August fifth, because Tuesday night stuff would rain for me. So I would not be here.
We could keep it Mondays and may, at least till the fiscal year.
Uh, we're, we're just gonna keep finding a reason to kick it down the road.
We're gonna kick it down. We've been talking about this for three years now.
Oh.
I'd like to just make a decision.
So I will make a motion to, um, keep May as May fifth and May nineteenth, and then beginning in June, start June third and June twenty-fourth. Do I have a second?
Hmm, we don't have to vote on the dates, right? Cause you said them anyways.
Yeah, we don't vote on dates.
Yeah.
Save your thirty seconds. Save the thirty seconds.
Let me just look at the annual town meeting schedule because you guys voted that already. So you'd have to change it and re-vote it.
Well, the fifth and then the nineteenth will remain the same.
Yeah, yeah. But the June ones will change and I just gotta make sure that it's not gonna mess up any...
June second is the only change. It would just be May the third. And we're doing warrant review.
On that first meeting in June. Okay. So... So warrant review will be on June third.
Right.
I just have to check and see if the room's available.
Sounds good.
Because some committees book a year's worth of meetings all at once.
And we should be that committee.
We can't just allow squatters' rights.
All right. All right, so we'll do, just so unclear, we're gonna stick with Monday, May fifth, Monday, May nineteenth, then Tuesday, June third, yeah, June third and then Tuesday, June twenty-fourth.
Okay. Fantastic.
Thank you for being open to trying something new.
Yeah. If it doesn't work, we'll blame you, Brian.
That's okay. Just put it on my list.
Yeah. Updates on any of the select board delegates? I'm gonna just ask for, I don't think there's a policy subcommittee yet. Fire station building committee?
We're meeting on the twenty-third, twenty-eighth?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third and what is the discussion on the twenty-third?
For the fire station building committee?
Yeah.
We're working on the pre-qualifications. That's, that's gonna be the largest portion of the meeting.
Madam Chair, so are we not doing the things under select board policy subcommittee? There's two items that came back from the thirty-first.
Oh, I was not even reading it. Yes, you are absolutely right. I was reading it as if it was the Citizens Academy. I did not see that. Thank you, Tracy. But twenty-third is pre-qualification for fire station. So... Anything else you wanted to add to the fire station before we jump backwards? All right, there was two policies that I had proposed. This is the third reading of the policy. I forgot when this started, but I think it was with the last chair. We did like a three reading where someone gets a plant, just to look at it, ask questions, and then the second one made some changes to it based on input from the board. And then third one, last bite at the apple and possibly a vote. I will read these as they are basically mine. So, "Select Board Policy on Utilization of Town Council. Purpose of this policy establishes guidelines for select board members regarding the appropriate use of town council and ensures that all communications are properly documented for transparency and accountability. Scope: This policy applies to all members of the Lakeville Select Board when seeking legal advice or services from town council on matters within the purview of the select board." Policy Guidelines. Appropriate Use of Town Council. Select Board Members should only consult town council for matters directly related to town business and within the scope of the select board responsibilities. Meaning that me as a select board member is not questioning something for like a different committee or something that we can't vote on or, or something that I have a question on that is completely unrelated to the, the job at hand. The matters or issues outside of the select board's purview are strictly prohibited. Noted Exceptions are questions of non-affirmed conflict of interest. For this policy discussion, if you're reaching out to council to make sure that you don't have a conflict of interest, I don't think that's of anyone's business. I don't think that needs to be like written down or anything like that. I think that's a, like a more personal use of it, but it is still within a board use. So I'm not looking to get everyone's dirt or something like that. I'm looking to have anything that people have written down be a decision that we can reference in the future. Meaning we have a book of policy, a book of legal decisions that we can reference when we have problems that pop up year over year because they always do. And we have attrition where we have people that are no longer in power or in the position and that we'd have to restart the clock. And I think this gives us a nice baseline, you know, to not have to do that every time.
Remember, sorry?
Yes.
We don't have that today.
We used to have it. Andrew cannot find our awesome book that Rita started and that I had used as well is, so every time we got a decision from council that was like not more than that, no, that's illegal or like just a two-word decision, we would ask for council to send an email back with whatever was asked and all that. And then that went right into a book.
And that's all gone.
And I don't know, it's, it's, it's among the missing.
But going forward, this will be stored electronically.
Electronically, electronically, everything, right? And not in someone's...
Electronically in the cloud.
Dusty book.
That's coming.
Someone's dusty book. Routine Matters Be Brought to Town Council by Individual Select Board Matters. For Complex or Potentially Costly Issues, a majority vote of the select board is required before engaging in town council. Meaning that if there's something that's, you know, I, I need you to come up with a whole new forty-three D plan, like that's not something one member is gonna come, reach out and oblige town council to be engaged in. Written Documentation Requirement. All Requests for Legal Advice and Services Must Be Submitted in Writing. We'd like to know the question, not just the answer. So, you know, if someone's saying they want to find out, you know, X, Y, and Z and the legal answer only answers the, the Y and Z part, we want to know that there was an X. Just for, just for the sake of knowledge. Written Requests Clearly State the Issue, Provide Necessary Background, and Specify the Legal Questions to Be Addressed. No Opinions from the Board Member Should Be Included for Obviously Reasons. Response to Documentation. Town Council Should Provide All Responses in Writing. Record Keeping. Town Administrator or Designated Staff Maintain a Log of All Requests and Responses. This Log Should Be Available for Review for Select Board Members and Appropriate Town Officials. Confidentiality, I think we all know. Cost Management. Select Board Should Monitor the Cost and Use of Town Council Services. Something you brought up, Member Plonka, the other day is being able to see what we're spending our money on and see where it's at. All Board Members Should Have the Ability to See That and Have That, you know, Referenced as Part of an Ongoing Understanding of How Our Budget Is Being Spent and Where We Are With Legal Issues. Annual Review. Policy be reviewed annually. Violations. Here's, here's one that was a little contentious. Serious and Repeated Violations of This Policy May Result in Disciplined Action Determined by the Select Board in accordance with Town Bylaws and, and state regulations. At most, this usually means like censure where we would get up and say, you did something wrong. And then the person would be like, wow, thank you. You know, there's not a lot of teeth to it, but at the same time, you are able to call out misdeeds.
Right.
Like not calling out misdeeds only, I don't know, enhances the probability that they'll happen again. Implementation. Policy is Effective Immediately Upon Adoption by a Majority Vote of the Lakeville Select Board.
Madam Chair, question?
Yes.
So is this an update or is this new? We didn't have...
This is the newest version of that same.
Okay.
There was no, oh, no, no one's adopted it. This is all...
Oh, oh, we didn't, oh, this did not exist until, wow.
There was no policy that I could find and I don't know, Andrew found anything. I, I've seen some towns have policies on using council. They're much more broad than this because they're talking about other boards and committees as well. Some towns don't allow other boards to go, in committees to go to council at all. It always has to go through the TA. And that is something that, you know, this board could consider as well. I know it is good to have one conduit, but at the same time, sometimes you just need to answer for her and, you know.
I will say for the record, this is a great document. And I'm, you haven't figured it out by now, I'm very policy-driven in the name of my, I'm at my full-time job, so this is a great...
To jam?
Yeah, I like it. So this is good stuff, so.
Well, thank you. It only became better with criticism. I will let anyone comment, question?
I have a question if I may to the town administrator. The requirement to then turn every conversation into catalogs, is that anything that'll put on your staff, whether in time or more legal fees?
I mean, it'd be difficult. I mean, a lot of times I'll send an email to Michelle when she calls me immediately. And then what kind of ends up happening is like, can you put that in an email? And she does and then she kind of leaves some stuff. Oh, and then I have a back and forth.
What if you Gemini'd it?
Huh?
Oh, you're not, you're not a Google person.
Like the space program?
So, Google, do you...
Microsoft.
Okay, Microsoft people. So I'm sure Microsoft has an equivalent, but whenever, you know, I have a meeting with someone now, I have the AI take the notes.
Oh, I can see a lawyer loving that. Are we being recorded?
Yeah, and then you could just send it back to the lawyer for redaction if, if you needed, but that would cut that issue.
You know if it's recorded, you're not gonna get the spicy nuggets that help you understand. Where they reference other cases and...
You can omit those as, as they're not relevant, obviously. But I understood the point on, you know, if it becomes cumbersome, but I think it's cumbersome when one member goes and has all this detail from town council and comes to a meeting prepared with all sorts of data from town council and then we don't know about any of it and it puts us all like at a really weird type of disadvantage.
Yeah. For the record, for the fifteenth time, when we had that issue with the TA search committee, we tried to involve another select board member and they refused to participate in that. That member was also on the TA search committee, so unfortunately, the opportunity was there to get that information back to the TA search committee, but it wasn't taken up.
Got it.
So there would have been much more information.
Yeah, yeah, but no, like there are thirty instances that I can just think of like off the top of my head where one member had information and the others didn't. Or after a couple of years, people were asking the same questions over and over again of town council. So even though I appreciate it's onerous and it's cumbersome, I do think the intent is to create less information asymmetry in the future and to be able to give people a place to start for their, their questions.
And this, this doesn't expand to say like planning board or ZBA or...
So that would be up to us. I mean, we could technically vote it for the select board and then vote for all other boards and committees as well. Like because I do, I do have concerns and I don't know if they're unfounded concerns because I'm not looking every day at, at the records, but how much are other boards and committees using town council? What are they using it for? Can we categorize it? Can we put, you know, a spreadsheet together to see where we're spending our money?
Give an example, ZBA almost always has representation from town council there. So would the, would we rely on the minutes or would we then say to that person that represents KP that night to say, okay, take everything you said tonight, document it and log it?
No, I, I think to the point of minutes, those are searchable and, you know, you can find those answers, whereas in if someone's giving you an opinion over the phone, that's just in the ether. At least there's something to reference from the minutes. You know, I know plenty of times where they've referenced, oh, when they were talking to this developer, they said this, or this was the decision that they came when they had this developer. A phone call between two people has none of that. Member Carboni?
Well, again, it's a timing thing. We have two new members that are seeing this policy for the first time this evening. So if you're comfortable adopting the policies, then...
I am.
I say we move forward, but I just wanted to check their, check in with their...
Thank you. I did review it in a day, so I'm comfortable voting on it.
Did we want to break it up into two votes or do we want to?
I would put...
All right. I would take a motion to approve select board policy on utilization for town council, taking effect immediately on passage.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Plunk aye.
Plunk aye.
Candido aye.
Carboni aye.
Dea aye.
You just like it because it rhymes?
No.
All right, Code of Conduct, same general thing applies. This is just a codified way to look at Code of Conduct for members of town boards and committees. This one does include other boards and committees and it's a general conduct bylaw. I got most of this directly from the Mass Municipal Managers Association Select Board Handbook. Most of this is taken either word for word or slightly variation of what they have on there. And this is just a way to, I hate to say tell people how to conduct themselves, but sometimes, yes, tell people how to conduct themselves when they're a member of those, of the Lakeville Boards and Committees. I won't read it word for word because it just takes forever for me to read it word for word after the last one. But I, I would absolutely love any input or any pushback if, if there's something someone disagrees with on here. Remember Day? No, you had comments last time, that's why I'm...
What'd I do?
I'm pushing to you. I know you had had some comments, which I think I removed two of the items that you had had comments to.
I can't remember what they are at this point, I'm sorry.
I can't remember either, but I remember saying, like, I remember saying, I think this could be removed and just solidify it a little bit.
General comment might be as we do these and ones in the future, when we have revisions, let's get a, a red line copy so we're like, we know exactly.
Yeah, I just changed the format too, so that revisions would have been awful. I made it as clear as possible.
I think one of the points of discussion that came up last time was, shoot, I just saw it and I've lost it. Oh, there it is, support board decisions once they're made. So I think we'd had a discussion on like, well, does that mean I can't vote against that at town meeting? And I think it was more like, like, look, just don't go out of your way to like...
Don't spend every time saying, I didn't vote for this.
Well, you can say that, that's fine. But don't go out of your way, like if, if the board voted to do something, don't come to him and be like, nah, that's, that's terrible, do this instead.
And that happens, as you know.
I've seen it.
Yeah. And people are passionate and sometimes the passion overrides kind of the ability to conform with what we're being asked to do as board members.
It's a blast, as Member Candido would say. I mean, no, Carboni, you say that, sorry.
What'd she say?
It's a blast.
It is a blast, that is her line. Biggest laugh I've ever seen at a very tense meeting. Anyone comments, questions?
I do. I want to, I'm all about consistency and I know that this is a working document as far as, or it's fluid. But, you know, just one of the things that actually stood out to me this time around was the boards, committees, and commissions, if we can continue that through, right through. Because it's, it's here and...
Oh, for the language?
Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah, so it's more... You know, where you've got, including the select board, but it would be all boards, committees, and commissions, not just... And then on the last page of this, you know, do not give direction, you know, to staff or other board members outside of a previous vote of the board. The exception, if it's the select board, we're gonna spell that out.
Oh, wait, show me.
Which one is that?
Where is this?
At the top of the...
Select Board Executive Secretary?
Yeah, it would be select board, you have to spell that out.
Got it. I'm like, what? Thank you, Lorraine.
I didn't pick up on that before, is it? Does that mean like, not the name drop, but like Tracy's the only one we can ask to do something?
Well, technically, we can ask things of Tracy because she's a select board employee, whereas in... Whereas in, she reports to Andrew, but she also reports duly to the select board in her job description. No one else reports in that way duly. All, all employees per the Town Administrator Act of nineteen eighty-nine report up through.
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight?
So I don't remember because I graduated from high school. So like, I guess direction or question, because it's very oftentimes where we're looking for resources to prepare for this meeting. So I might be saying, hey, Lacy, could you drop me da, 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 da? Or, hey, Nick, you got any references to da, 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 da? It looks like we're talking about it. Like, is that direction?
No, I thought that was, I would say that's information seeking. What I'm talking about specifically, and maybe I'll ask for your help with the language, is if I call up the DPW director and tell him he needs to cut down a tree because it's a danger. If a select board member calls ten minutes later and says, don't cut down that tree, that to me is crazy town. And that's like giving direction, specific direction, that you do not have the authority to give as a board member.
Making sure we all understand.
No, no, but that.
That was my interpretation. I, I read that a couple of times. Those, yeah, we can request information.
Absolutely. All information should be fair game. Like there should be no hoarding of information and, and all that.
I know there's a phobia of that around here.
What, what language would help make you feel better about that particular statement?
Well, I'm not sure, to be honest, because like, you know, requesting information has also directed them to give up time of their week to research and provide.
Well, sometimes, sometimes the right thing is to obviously, you know, go through Andrew and there, but you can't have everything go through Andrew. That can't, you can't, all roads can't lead to Andrew. Um, there has to be, you know, some times where you're talking to the department heads. Um, but I know the intent, but I'd like to firm up the language to make it more specific to your point.
I, I mean, with all due respect, this feels like a policy that I can't believe we have to have because we go through all of our training and ethics.
But you don't think we have to have, or would you just like to think?
I'd like to think we don't have to have it. But I also, I think a bit of a taste of realist, the people that this probably would apply to aren't going to care.
True, but you know, there's that. There, there is that, but we can't, we can't let the, the most lawless among us decide like everything.
Just saying.
I know.
A few centuries, the same person's not going to care.
And again, this is for, this, this policy was designed for all boards, committees and commissions. And that actually is very specific to select board. So either it gets reworded or we take it out.
How would you reward it? Action item, Carboni.
She's not on the policy committee.
I'm not. I'm just looking for help to make that language very clear.
Refrain from giving direction to, to staff.
Individual direction?
Yeah. Non-board direction? Non-voted direction? Non-information? Like.
Are you losing me? It's nine o'clock.
I know, I know, but.
Refrain is probably.
This is why I suggested bring an old business to the top.
I'm sorry.
Get rid of all this.
I'll be happy to pull this one back one more time. Um, and I'm going to make a couple of corrections per these suggestions and align on a few of those, uh, all boards, committees and commission. Um, and then I will sit there and just look at that one statement and see how I can make it better.
Ask your friend Gemini, whoever he is.
Gemini, no, that's just a meeting minute note for, for thing. Um, and you're going down to Old Colony Regional Vote Tech Building Committee. Next meeting and any agenda?
Um, so, well, you got two members now, um, that are on that committee. Uh, the challenge is that we're also missing all the meetings because of our meetings.
But Tuesday.
Tuesday, we'll fix that.
Hopefully we'll fix that. Um, tomorrow morning, there is the other meeting about, you know, how to deal with the, the various town clerk's offices in the election, which is what, November eighteenth they're targeting?
November eighteenth.
Tuesday?
Yep.
We can't do a weekend around here. But, um, there's that and, um, beyond that, I don't have much more. They've been having smaller kind of work sessions going on. I don't know if you've had a chance to attend any, Chris, but.
One and there's another one Wednesday night.
Okay.
A sustainability meeting that they're going to have.
I did notice that they, um, they seem to be doing a little more social media presence. I've actually seen, uh, the school's Facebook account out there posting some stuff recently, some like FAQs and whatnot. So they, they seem to be moving forward with a little bit of info sharing.
They're going to need all the help they can get. All right. Moving on for Information Technology Subcommittee.
Uh, so we just had a meeting last week on the eighth. So thank you to, um, the COA director for letting us use the building and not hitting me for leaving a light on when we left. Yeah, so, um, I think we had all but two members there. So that was good because it is a relatively large committee. Member Planka also, um, visited and listened in. There was, um, good discussion. There's like four things I think that came out of that discussion there. There was a request from some of the folks to, to ask the select board to consider formally changing the name from Information Technology Advisory Subcommittee to just technology, like drop the information. They felt that that gives a bit of a stigma to being like, okay, it's only computers and networks that we're here for, where they said, you know, there's a lot of other breadth of, um, experience on that team where they could potentially help chime in on stuff.
Fine, adding that to a very easy agenda.
Then there was, um, uh, they also would like to ask if it was okay if we kind of advertised its existence across the town a little more, not to like residents, but to town resources. Just to say like, hey, here we are. Here's what the select board charges with.
Newsletter?
Newsletter, um, anything else we can think of?
Yep, Communications Committee.
Just to, just to let people know we're out there. Um, the two items, uh, Chair Candita, you had asked about. So Assessor is a software, which is the vision software. Um, the recommendation from the chair of the Board of Assessors was let's let, uh, Robbie get started and then talk to him.
Makes sense.
The other one was the, uh, Minute Software. So a couple of the members, I think, said they were going to take it on themselves to go and, um, do some investigation on that. Um, unfortunately, it appeared you had dropped one name. Unfortunately, it looks like that one is not part of Civic Plus. It's like another vendor, um, but they're going to dig a little deeper on that.
Well, if something has synergies with Civic Plus, obviously that's, and if it works good, that would probably be the preference.
Yeah, so, um, let's see, this is April. So our next meeting would be the sixth. So we're, no, wait, thirteenth. I'm sorry. Every second Tuesday of the, of the month. So oh, I have to check my Tuesdays now to see who's overlapping with who. Um, but that's all for now.
Okay. Communication and any outreach? I don't think you've had a chance to meet since last week.
That's not me.
No, I'm looking.
Oh, sorry.
Um, and then we haven't met with Citizens Academy.
Well, I have enough to eat.
You do?
I attended the, um, the virtual.
Oh, oh, yeah.
A meeting that.
They, they canceled the first one and they rescheduled it.
So the municipal, um, our MMA, which is our association that we belong to, uh, they had held a webinar about, you know, citizens academies with three different, um, presenters. We had Barnstable, we had Danvers and we had the city of Pittsfield. Um, so they've had their, you know, share of execution of their citizens academy. So I've, you know, retrieved two copies of all of their stuff. So, um, when I get together with Maureen, I'll, we'll start to work on it. But, um, and Andrew. If, yeah, Andrew can show up. He'll be like sitting over there, sleeping in the corner. They all recommended that, um, it, it begins in the fall. So I'm looking at the, the calendar and I'm thinking, you know, a year maybe or whatever. We'll have to look at it, but unless we're aggressive.
Question, I'm trying to see. I know I'm going to get the charges later. We're going to Citizens, Citizens Academy. They do what?
It's a municipal citizens academy where we would hold, um, a finite number of evenings. Um, ten come to mind that would be broken down into very specific topics about municipal government.
Finance.
Finance.
Public safety.
Safety.
Educational.
Citizen planner, like, yeah, all of those things.
What, you know, you got federal.
How to run for office.
Oh, federal, local, you know, how it stays local, how government works, town meeting.
So, uh, Member Carboni was part of a very great cohort class where she learned advanced ones for Suffolk University. And at, for grad school for me, this, it was my capstone project to bring it to Lakeville back in twenty twelve or twenty thirteen. And I ended up having twenty-two Lakeville residents sign up, um, with Bridgewater State. You remember that for, for, forever ago? And, um, I ended up having, uh, two people that later ran for selectmen. Actually, three people. One person couldn't show up. Um, but three of the people that originally had signed up ended up being selectmen in the future that hadn't, you know, been part of the process. So it was kind of, kind of cool to see the evolution of that. So, um, Member Carboni had the idea that she really wanted to, uh, to bring that back to the town and help people get involved because as much as we're all involved, there's a lot of people out there that don't know how to take the first step. And making it easier for them to come join is, um, part of the, the goals. And give them enough that they can stand on their feet a little bit in the first meetings and not feel like they're overwhelmed.
Great.
Hopefully that will, you know, yeah, yeah, awesome, great. Um, do we have any other? All right. So new business, any new business? Nothing new to come before the board? All right, old business. I, I think we, uh, beat to death item A. Think we're okay there. Item B, revisit discussion, possible vote to establish Route one oh five Main Street Traffic Flow Task Force. It is the second item. Uh, from Andrew in your packet. Does anyone want to speak to this? Uh, Member Carboni, I think this was you.
Just to update, um, Member Hunt and Planka, this is because we have so much activity that are, that's happening up on one oh five Main Street. Um, with potential development and we have issue with Bridge Street, you know, coming on that it would be nice to have somewhat of a plan or involvement of, you know, multiple people to try to stay on top of it.
Primarily objective is traffic per the.
The traffic flow or lack of a better name.
Right. Uh, and I assume that's highly dependent on mass highway duty, right?
Yep.
Getting them to, so we make the recommendations and they hopefully say, yes, we'll fund it.
They'll never fund it.
Or, but even with, you know, the, the businesses that are coming in, you know, having to be able to have the discussions.
Right.
Yep.
Volume and all that sort of stuff, any new bit?
Okay, okay, great.
There's just so much coming hard and fast.
Good.
Uh, revisit discussion and possible vote to sign license agreement with Lakeville Martial Arts Club. See attached memo. I will let Member Day speak to this.
Uh, thanks.
Interested in speaking to it.
Came up last time, I had questions over the rate primarily, uh, in the fact that the rate minus heat and electricity are included in that rate. Um, I felt it was way below market rate for a commercial space of its size. Um, I had stated that it was eighteen hundred, about eighteen hundred square feet. And to correct things, the former chair of Parks said, no, it's only six hundred. And then confirmed the next day that yes, it is actually eighteen hundred square feet. They went and measured.
I will, I will say I was shocked that it was eighteen hundred square feet to the point when it was raining this Sunday. I almost went out, but I just, I stopped myself.
So, uh, I think we had last time tabled it to say, let's give the TA an opportunity to look at this further. I know he also had questions on why is it a license agreement and not a lease agreement? Should this be going out to a competitive bid? Because at least in my mind, the value of this contract is likely over thirty-five thousand dollars, which would trigger a bid process. If bid's the wrong word, please jump in and slap me. Um, so we're back again. So I don't know if there's any updates the town minister would like to provide to guide us in this journey or?
Yeah, so, um, I post, I don't know if you posted, I sent you guys all the memo on this. It kind of outlines my recommendations. And I think Lakeville Martial Arts Club has done a great job doing what they've been doing for like decades. Um, but I think just the multitude of the parks is trying to raise more revenue. Um, potentially trying to find office space at the camp. Um, I think it's just good practice to just see what the options are. And what I thought would be the best way to do that is post an RFI, which is a request for information, just to see what's out there. Um, very well can come back with nothing, but it might come back with something we're not even thinking of that blows us away and is good. Um, of course, that'd be non-binding. We would then, at that point, reevaluate and either post an RFP or just keep doing what we're doing.
So is your recommendation, because we are out of compliance with our date already, um, is your recommendation to um, have a one-year contract and do the RFI or do the IR, RFI?
Do the contract and then off RFI simultaneously.
Okay.
A one-year contract.
Correct.
Makes sense to me. I like that request for information. I've never really.
Yeah, it's, it's done for a different reason. I'm trying to think of, Tom did a few of them. Basically, if you have a, don't have a use for something, you're trying to see what, what the public has without doing an official process beforehand.
Question I would have is if we do a one-year that puts us back to April the next year, would we be able to still do like RFP and whatnot ahead of this expiring again? It might just be resigning one with them again, but.
Oh, I'm sorry to jump in, but would we backdate the contract to start February? Obviously not having him pay for February, you know, rates, just to keep the date consistent, like throw that out there as well.
You can say it's a ten-month or something.
Yeah.
I just don't know how much time we need to be, to prepare ourselves for whatever might stay the same, might be something different. Who knows?
We defer. I'd probably defer to Andrew.
Um, it's hard to say. I mean, I have to reach out to obviously the company and see like, maybe they're booking out a year and a half, two years. I don't know if I want to necessarily get involved with canceling that kind of deal. So I'd like to probably talk to the owner.
Sure.
Of that, see what, what he thinks as well.
Okay. Um, do we want to vote to approve the one-year license agreement at this juncture? Or would you like a little bit more time?
I'd say a little bit more time.
Okay.
Maybe come back in two weeks and after I talk to him.
All right, on the twenty eighth?
Yeah, for twenty eighth.
Add that to the twenty-eighth, please. Um, and then revisit the discussion, possible vote to approve Taunton Water Connection for Ten Harding Street. Um, just a reminder for this group, um, the reason it didn't get approved last time, there were just questions on what the use was going to be of the, of the project. Um, which is kind of an odd question for us to be asking because, um, this is usually a spec build. So sometimes they don't know. They might know the category or, um, what have you. But Andrew went back and tried to get some more information. So I will push it over to Andrew.
Uh, thank you. So I have an email in front of you from the building commissioner. I asked the information that was requested. Um, and he came back with a design flow, um, measurements of potential uses. Um, I think it's going to lead to potentially changing the water connection application in the future. Just to kind of, um, loop the Board of Health and his office into the applications to get kind of like a full kind of read on these when they come in. Um, but based off the, the calculations that they submitted, not going to use more than six thousand gallons per day.
And is there any other contacts this board needs in order to make a decision?
Nope.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to approve the Taunton Water Connection for Ten. I would like to make a motion to approve the Taunton Water Connection for 10 Harding Street. Any other language I need to add in there, Tracy?
Um, usually you put in a gallons per day.
And for the.
It was 6,000.
6,000.
For 6,000 gallons per day.
Looks like made, made a recommendation on, on that about any change in the building use or qualifying event, preserving the right to modify or rescind.
Do we always have that, or do we have to vote that?
Um, we don't, I don't think, I don't think, I think it's just implied, but that's a good idea to add in the motion, I think.
Amending and adding in the language that upon receipt of data showing actual water use, change of building use, or any other qualifying event, the select board reserves their right to modify and/or rescind this vote. We could probably put that on everything. Thank you. Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, if I may. I think this speaks a lot to how much more we could be doing in general with these water allocations. I think some of the, the improved communication we now have with Taunton Water, we should take the opportunity to figure out. All right, because what happens is generally we make these approvals and then they just gather dust for years. We never go back and look at them. We never figure out, did they ask for way too much? What's going on? I really think we should work out a system where, pick a number, but for example's sake, yearly or bi-yearly, we're going and back to Taunton and saying, okay, they asked for 6,000, what are they using? Well, they're using 1,200. Well, why is that? You know, were eight of the bays empty? What, what's the case? Because we may be allocating way more than is necessary in some instances. And especially where there's a change of use or even a change of ownership, that should trigger like an automatic, okay, let's look at this.
So are we getting any triggers right now? Say if someone is massively over-consuming their allocation?
Not that I'm aware of. We did.
Because I've never seen one.
No, but we've recently got an agreement from Taunton, make sure I say the right thing here, where they were willing to give us the total usage on like, say, a quarterly basis, but it might be like a quarter or two behind, just to give ourselves an idea of.
That'd be great.
Like, hey, you guys allocated 300, you're only using 240. Well, where's the other 60 that people said they need?
To that point, we would get a much better handle on what we have left
Yeah.
to offer.
Right.
Um, and that we wouldn't have to go back again and, and make more deals.
You look at, you know, not to always hound on the parcel, but you look at the, the hospital, and we've already allocated
Multiple.
Tens of thousands, multiple of gallons per day. Well, when that changed hands, should we have changed that? Should we have come back and looked at it, forced them back through the process? I don't think we do anything like that, do they?
No, but we, we should have a policy that says if we.
We're going to perk up.
If we added, if we change it, if we have a new one, it automatically deletes the old one on that particular parcel.
Something.
Something that.
Trigger a new process.
Because it is, it's a black hole.
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've approved stuff for stuff that already has allocations.
Right. We're going to, we're going to add an allocation. All right. I have a motion and a second. Uh, can I get a roll call vote?
Plonka, aye.
Plonka, aye.
Candido, aye.
Carbone, aye.
Day, aye.
Madam Chair, I, one thing that, um, under old business, because I think you were going to go on to the next thing. Going through some old minutes, I did come across this and I know that it was brought up in one of the previous meetings when, um, I think it was when Rhino was here with us. So back on September 24th, 2018, there was an update on that Lakeville Hospital.
You were going through meeting minutes from 2018. I'm so glad you've got more committees now.
A lot of time. But it had been brought up about the monitoring well on hospital property. So, uh, back then, it has been moved onto the Eastern Bank property. So it is on the Eastern Bank property, so I know it was a concern and they were going to go look into that, but I found it.
Nice.
Look at you. I love it. Next select board meeting date, April 15, 2025. Tomorrow, budget meeting. This will wrap up our meeting with department heads. Uh, and it'll start at 5:45 and this meeting will actually be at the library. Right? Yes. Reminder, reminder, everyone here, it'll be at the library.
And then the, and then the wrap-up meeting, has that been scheduled yet?
We haven't scheduled it yet, but, uh, I would like us to have a budget wrap-up and maybe a little bit of a narrative meeting to wrap it all up, to, you know, kind of synthesize all this data that we've been sitting through for hours and hours because sometimes it's a little hard to pick out some of the more salient points. So being able to wrap up kind of the projects that we have, the budgets we have, the budget we don't have, um, and some of the inputs and outputs and make it really clear for everyone watching what we're grappling with and how we're trying to address it, I, I think will be a time well, well spent for us.
Who would that be the?
Comment on the budgets in general. None of us quite know yet what the school committee meeting was doing tonight.
Note.
So we'll need to follow up on that and see if they even have a budget.
Yep.
Oh, I.
Did you get something?
Yeah, so it was simply a procedural correction from the vote. They vote, and that's all I have, but I know they vote separately. They take two votes, one for the.
Sellers.
The sellers, correct, they're always separate.
Got it.
I believe they didn't follow the correct procedure, and this was simply to adjust, correct that procedural error.
Okay.
Good on them.
So numbers are the same as far as we know?
Right, there's, right, they did not reject quarterback.
Good on them.
Oh, Madam Chair?
Absolutely.
Do we, will it be the follow, the wrap-up meeting, the following week?
I will depend on Andrew to say when he will, he would recommend the wrap-up meeting. Would that be the 28th?
21st and on.
21st and on, so.
After the 21st.
Yeah, it's up to your schedules. I will send an email in the morning, ask any availabilities.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Fantastic. I'll take a motion.
Take a motion to adjourn at 9:22 PM.
Second. Uh, motion to second.
Hi.
Plonka, aye.
Candido, aye. Carbone, aye.
Day, aye.
Gee, need a couple more phones. Because I see you've got three there. And I always forget to turn them back on.